Okay, I'm gonna call to order the planning board meeting for Tuesday, December 17th. To order, first call, roll call.
Rupert Friday.
Here.
Thomas Callahan. Accent, with calls?
Yes, he believes if you get here late, he has an appointment.
Jerry Burnett.
Here.
Dr. O'Neil.
Here.
Mark Brady.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, you have four members, perfect, you have a quorum.
You. First thing we're gonna undertake is a public hearing. Clock rose subdivision, this is continued. Preliminary plan, major subdivision with street creation flat, V lot, 27. Counselor, you look like you're eager and ready to go. I know we left you with a shopping list of things to do, and great anticipation as to what you would accomplish. So if you could, and if you could, for those that are watching us at home, because we do flock in an audience, but even for people here, if there were things that were brought up from last meeting and you were dealing with it, could you let us know what those are and what your decision was, or your client's decision was?
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Michael Resnick for the applicant. And as you know, we presented our expert witnesses at the last hearing, including Mr. Caido, our civil engineer, and Mr. Rabidow, our wetland biologist. And many of the comments that we received from the board, as well as staff, were relative to amendments to the draft conservation easement and restrictions. So I can tell you that we went through a transcript of all the comments that were received. We believe that we captured those, they were sent to staff. Staff made additional edits, and I can tell you at this time that my client had no objection to any of the edits that were made by staff. And as far as we're concerned, at least relative to those discussions, we have a final document subject to any further comment from the board. And I would suggest that the same is the HOA. So the homeowners association, we did the same thing. We've incorporated any commentary from the board and the community, and I believe that we have an agreement with staff subject to this board's review. There were some additional items that I would go over briefly, but let me just add that we needed to get you a fee and lieu calculation relative to the open space, and that's been prepared by Millstone, Mr. Caido, and submitted to the town. So that should be in your updated packets. In addition, Mr. Chairman, you had requested or brought up the concept that you and the board and some of the community were hoping that we would agree to a restriction, whether it be in the approval or a deed for renting. And I have discussed that with my client, and we are not going to put that condition on the table out of respect. There are other mechanisms, as you know, that the town is working on for short-term rental. Certainly not my client's intent for these types of homes to be a rental. We don't believe that will be the type of buyer, and there's certainly no intent to market them relative to a rental or a short-term rental at this time, but we believe that it would have a substantial effect on the market value of the homes. So we are gonna object to that, Mr. Chairman. In addition, I think that there were some questions relative to bedroom count and similar deed restrictions. Our position at this time, as you know, is that we are gonna be submitting for individual OWTS systems. There will be restrictions based off of those documentation on bedroom count, et cetera. As Mr. Caido explained to the board, these are built out conservatively. I believe it's based on an occupancy of two people per bedroom, and it is gonna be a state-of-the-art system. And if anybody wants a refresher on the type of system that it will be, Mr. Caido can certainly do that. Mr. Chairman, I believe your other comments were relative to maintenance and other obligations relative to the conservation easement, particularly comments about the baseline study which has been added. Go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
Do we have, the only thing I couldn't find is on maintenance, both conservation and on the road, I don't see any kind of firm scheduling as to when it should be done and what the ramifications are to the association if it's not done. And we talked about, because we've done this in other subdivisions, is reporting back, when they get any testing or stuff that goes back to the, a copy goes to the town. All right, just perfunctuary. That's the thing that I did not see in either, in any of the documents. So, just looking for something tight.
I'd be happy to add that.
Okay.
No objection to that.
Thank you.
I can work with staff on the appropriate schedule.
Yeah.
On a two-year cycle, or what's the cycle?
Well, that's to be determined, because there's nothing definitive. It states that there will be maintenance, but there's nothing definitive as to when it will be done.
Right, so, Mr. Chairman, that was a note, actually, that I, unfortunately can't see it in the document, at least the one that I have in my book, but there was a note in that, there was a red line going back and forth between staff and the applicant. And the note was to the applicant to add the scheduling for the driveway, for the driveway maintenance. So that is, to my knowledge, has not been done yet.
Okay.
There were a couple of notes back and forth between the applicant's engineer and myself.
I mean, it's in there, but it's there, but it's general, it's not.
There is no schedule in there for the driveway maintenance.
There's no exhibit. We will, we will work on putting that together.
Sorry to interrupt.
No, please. And again, Mr. Chairman, you had brought up issues regarding the calculation of the open space. That was done. Other comments that we saw were relative to the HOA, which I believe have been made subject to the schedule that we just discussed. Mr. Friday, we added in language relative to the baseline documentation. Obviously, we're open to any comments or edits to it, but I think we thought that it captured what, the spirit of what you were asking for. And that's really it. And I am aware of a correspondence that came from opposition, Mr. Callahan. And again, I would say, I would say this, I would have appreciated to have the commentary before Sunday or Monday, because what I would have done is I would have, even though I believe jurisdictionally, with due respect, the permit has been approved by DM. I believe that most of his commentary is aimed at their jurisdiction. However, out of respect for the opposition and this board, I would have gone to Mr. Rabidow and given a formal response, but in the timeframe that it was provided to us, we didn't, we didn't do that. But what I will say is, again, with respect to his advocacy for his position, nothing but respect, but he is asking this board to venture into an area that is beyond your jurisdiction. And I think that this applicant has been very amenable to many of the conditions and items that have been requested, and I have no further presentation other than we would ask for a vote this evening.
Mr. Chairman.
Yep.
The correspondence from the opponent didn't arrive until Sunday.
All right.
So just want to be clear, we also received it at the last minute, Mr. Resnick.
Oh, no, and I wasn't suggesting.
I don't think you were.
Yeah, I wasn't suggesting in any way, and I'm not sure why it would be thought that I was suggesting that staff gave it to me late. The comment was aimed at Mr. Callahan, who wants to delay this project, because if he gave it to us early, he would have gotten written responses.
That's an assumption for another board and not here. Just to your expectations, I am not gonna close tonight, because I want this board to be able to get everything from you today, be able to go through it. We're well within our 90 days. Mr. Callahan will be here at the next meeting, so he can address anything, but I don't want to, I always have tried to be very, very open about expectations and stuff, so we will be continuing this until our next meeting and finishing it up there, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'm gonna turn it over to board members.
Now, the only question I had from this material was, we ask for people to do reporting on maintenance in other projects, as well as this one, of course. Like, the question is the timeframe, because sometimes this gets lost in the wilderness because there's no timeframe, and who do they report to? Do they report to our planning department, public works? Who do they report to? And do those people know? I think our planning departments certainly know, but if they report to public, do they even know that we've asked them to take this responsibility and make sure that the agreement is fulfilled?
Dr. O'Neil, yes. I sent, I sent the updated homeowners association agreement along with the O&M plan back to the engineering department and the Department of Public Works. I have not received a response yet.
Okay. And I believe in the, in past subdivisions where we've done this, it's gone to both departments for the report, the end of the report that they get, so.
I had a verbal conversation with both directors.
Yeah.
Prior to sending the email. I have not received a response yet. I sent the email.
We did this before.
December 9th.
I don't wanna be.
Sure, no, absolutely. So hopefully we'll have a response in the next, it was a week ago, Dr. O'Neil.
The best committee in the world is one. You have two, two sources that you're recording to?
No, I'm asking both of them which one they would prefer the report to go to.
Withdraw the comment.
You know she's always got everything under control.
I assume that.
You go, then. I'm good. Sorry, you, Doc.
I just wanted to start by thanking you for making revisions to the conservation easement. And I was wondering if you'd be willing to make one tweak in response to some comments that we received in three, 4J, I think.
4J.
Let me find it.
Yeah, if we could, on the board and those in the audience, if you speak, can you enunciate to speak loud enough? These poor ladies are trying to go 300 miles an hour.
Sorry. Number 4J, which talks about there will shall not be any conduct of.
What should we?
It reads, "There shall not be conducted upon any activity or use which damages fish or wildlife or their habitats," and goes on. Can we add amphibians to that language? In my mind, wildlife includes amphibians, but your request seems like a simple clarification.
No, great.
And the homeowners association, again, thank you for all the amendments. I think you captured the concerns and clarifications. Oh, and the conservation easement, thanks for adding the stone walls. I think the residents value that for many years. In the homeowners association, again, thanks for all the changes, the clarifications. The only comment I had on that was already captured about the schedule. And then I had a question about the fee and lieu.
That is still being calculated by the tax department, as part of, you know, correct?
Well, I was just wondering, from the work done by Millstone, they use persons for dwelling in it from the 1990 census, and maybe that's a staff question, I don't know why it's on 1990 census.
I miss that.
I can answer that. On record, Ben McHale with Millstone.
Do you want me to swear him in?
He's already been sworn in.
Yeah, it's a continuation.
Please state your name for me and swear your last.
Benjamin Caido, C-A-I-T-O, with Millstone.
Thank you.
That calculation is taken directly from the regulations, or the zoning ordinance, and it specifically spells out, there's two different censuses. If you read that, there's one from '92 and 97, one from '96, and that's how it's spelled out in the.
Okay, okay, I thought that might be the case, but I figured I'd ask.
Yeah, so the answer is probably the town should update it to 2020 or.
Right, so, absolutely, and I want to point out again, for the record, even though I've already done this at the beginning, we're under the old subdivision regulations. So we're, so I believe this, that has been updated in the new regulations. But, and I can double check on that, Mr. Friday, but we are under the old regulations.
I just thought it was computer, so I thought there was probably something like this. Yeah. And I think, yeah, that's the only comments I have.
Okay. So if anybody from the public wishes to speak, sir, could you stand up? Identify yourself, bring your hand.
Please raise your right hand. Do solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you God.
I do.
Please state your name and spell your last.
Thomas Warrin, W-A-R-R-E-N.
Thank you.
26 Jake's Way.
Thank you.
So I'm the president of the condo association, the Abugging Condo Association. We've been supportive of this project as it was originally presented. Five buildings, single-family residences, was under the impression that they were gonna be owner-occupied. That was how it was originally progressed, presented four or five years ago. Last meeting we had, it was a subject of rentals, short-term rentals, college rentals, and tonight we learned that the owner of this project is not ruling that out. So with that in mind, I just want to let you know that our organization is opposed to that. Now, I know short-term rentals is something that's still under investigation in the town and how they're gonna go forward with it. College rentals is another issue, but I want you to know that if this is the direction that it's going, we are gonna, we are opposed to this. There's enough of college rentals, there's enough of short-term rentals, and there's enough of seasonal rentals in the town that we do not want to see anymore, particularly next door to us. We have it already adjacent to us on Alexander, which is almost all college rentals. Eastwood Look, which we can hear all the time, almost entirely college rentals. We feel that that's enough, and that we should, and we object to that concept. I know we can't stop it at this point, and I know the owner of the property is gonna do what the market bears, but I just want you to be aware of that.
Thank you. Not to put words in counsel's mouth, but my understanding, if things haven't changed over the last 15 years that we've been doing this, is as the developer, these are for sale to private owners. And what you're saying, what you said when we asked about short-term rentals and restrictions and the deed and stuff, is that in selling to a private owner, you, you're not going to deed restrict them, so it will be back to the owner of property to decide what they want to do. And that's really kind of the American way, unfortunately, or fortunately, depending on how you look at it.
Understood.
Okay? Am I correct in that explanation? If I'm not, clarify.
That's spot on, Mr. Chairman, and again, what my client, the developer, envisions are premium homes that would be owner-occupied. It's just a question of deed restricting, which is just something that candidly, there are many conditions that a planning board can put on a development, that is not one of them. There are other mechanisms to control rent, but that's not the intent, and I think that we understand where these homes are located, the types of homes that are gonna be proposed, and looking at the different demographics in this town, I think you're gonna see it's an owner-occupied residence. We just can't agree on condition.
If I may say one more thing, that there's a home on Robinson Street, multi-million dollar home, that is a short-term rental, is one Ocean Road at the S Curse, so price point doesn't provide it that eventually.
Thank you. Could anybody else like to speak? Staff, wanna add anything to this?
Sure.
I'd like to speak.
Okay. Thank you. If you could do me a favor, could you identify yourself?
Yes.
Raise your hand, they will swear you in.
Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you God?
I do.
Please state your name and spell your last.
My name is Frances Peterson, P-E-P-E-R-S-O-N. Thank you. And we're new residents, rented in Clark Place, and we concur wholeheartedly with Tom Warren. The reason we bought the place that we did was because of the nature of the neighborhood, and certainly having short-term rentals, particularly permitting college students to live there, we think would be very detrimental to the neighborhood. And as Tom Warren just stated, we already have quite a few short-term rentals. It isn't as though, as a neighborhood, we're not doing our share. So I'm just agreeing wholeheartedly, and I haven't spoken to anyone in the association or the neighbor, a man by the name of Paul, who agrees wholeheartedly. So anyway, it would be very unpopular.
Thank you.
That's all.
Just, again, to set expectations, as a board, we don't have a legal right to deed restrict a private property.
And I understand that, as you said.
We can ask, and we did.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Staff, anything?
Okay, so, thank you, Mr. Friday, it sounds like.
Hold on, hold on. Sir, would you like to speak?
Please.
Thank you. If you could, identify yourself, raise your hand.
My name is Frank Durand, D-U-R-A-N-D.
D or B?
D as in David. U-R-A-N-D, and I live at 18 Jake's Way.
Please raise your right hand.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Do you solemnly swear?
I watch this on TV, I'm not used to this.
It doesn't get any more exciting.
Wow. Oh, there we go, okay, go ahead.
There's a couple.
Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you God?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I live at 18 Jake's Way. I'm a neighbor of Tom. One of the things I'm curious about is we talk about the cost of these developments of these various homes. How big are these homes gonna be? Am I allowed to ask? I'm not even sure. How big and how many bedrooms? You said two people per bedroom. It's gonna be, what, five buildings in total? How big are these, how big are they gonna be?
Sir, if you could just direct your questions to the board.
How big are these individual residents going to be?
Counsel, could you please address that?
Yes, I'm gonna ask Mr. Caido.
Thank you.
So it's a, it's a more complex question than how you posed it, but I will say that for basis of our calculations, we are looking at around a 1,400 square foot footprint of the building. That may not fit on some of these lots, but that's what we designed our stormwater capacities for, and we're assuming a four-bedroom house.
1,400 square feet, you got four bedrooms? That seems kind of small to me.
That's footprint. That's the footprint.
So, sir, in the, in the documents that were drafted by the owner or owner-applicant, I believe it's a 3,000 square foot minimum excluding garage?
Yes.
Excluding garages.
That sounds.
So with the, the footprint, I don't, it's relevant to an engineer, it's not relevant to a real estate person, but in the documents, so, the documents that drafted, the house has to be a minimum of 3,000 square feet excluding the garage.
See, my concern is, gentlemen mentioned, they're gonna have two occupants per bedroom. That means in my simple math, so eight people in a particular residence. So the reality of the situation, if all the people that buy it decide four people in the bigger buildings, that'll be 32 potentially college students, so short-term rentals are gonna happen in the neighborhood.
Okay, I'll address that, because being an engineer, we can complicate things in a great way. So, and, and when he was talking about the footprint, he's talking basically size of the foundation. We limit the size of the house, so if you do the math, you get about 3,500. They're designing the runoff, the septic and everything else on two people per bedroom. So they're over-engineering runoff, they're over-engineering septic, all of that kind of stuff. And that's not unusual today. A lot of developers will over-engineer anything. That way, God forbid you get a 100-year storm or something, you don't have stuff backing up in the house, et cetera. Did I translate well?
Yes.
Thank you.
I think that's great. My bigger question, candidly, is not so much staff, because I know you did a great job in that area, it's the number of people that could be occupying the homes.
So state law says one student, one, one person per bedroom, up to five, no more.
Mm-hmm. My concern would be more of the students, because as they mentioned, in 18 Jake's Way where I live, when the people up the street, the kids on a Saturday afternoon, when the URI has the games, it gets rather vocal. And that's on Friday night and different other things. My wife and I moved here from Massachusetts for one primary reason, the beauty of Narragansett, the tranquility of Narragansett. And candidly, I don't want to lose that selfishly, I'll tell you right off front, I don't want to lose that. And I am concerned by this development, if it's allowed to be opened up to college students and short-term rentals, the reason we moved down here is gonna be taken away from us. So that's the only reason I wanted to come up here and speak to that. I was in commercial real estate in Boston for 35 years. I understand the process, and I understand what's proposed and what actually takes place. So I just suggest to you and to the people here, I would just hope we go into this a little bit with our eyes wide open, and we do the best we can to minimize any of the situation that could take place that goes to a college student, short-term rental.
Thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
Before I go, staff, anybody else would like to speak? Speak now or forever hold your peace, as they say. Staff?
The public hearing, Mr. Chairman, you said would remain open?
Yes.
Okay.
Would you like to speak now or later?
Oh, no, I'm happy to talk now and later.
Okay.
Okay. So, yeah, so there are a few conditions that we'll go over later on, maybe next time, about making sure that we capture everything from the master plan, we capture everything from the zoning decision, we edit anything that we need to from the preliminary plan, add anything at that point. One other thing, I think the applicants already said that they're going to provide us an updated conservation easement with the notation from Mr. Friday, and an updated homeowners association agreement with the schedule for the previous driveway. I would like also, there's just a small discrepancy between the conservation plan itself and the area of which DEM has required the applicant to re-vegetate, and so I would be asking that the applicant update the conservation area itself, I can just kind of point it out, I'm sure. Maybe I can point it out, find the button. And I'm sure, Ryan, if you wanted to, so it's, Ben, I don't even know if you can see that, because it's behind the podium.
Yep.
But this area right here, can you go forward too? Right here, see how that whole area, all along the property line, has been required to re-veg? Can we add that into the conservation easement? I think I checked all of the other areas, and they're all substantially, you know, comply with the changes, so they nicked off that corner and up here, and then put some additional area around the individual forested wetland, but it's just that south area on Lot 2. So for your next meeting, you should have a revised, an updated, revised conservation easement.
Okay. Anything else?
No, everything we can cover next month.
Can we cover streetlights?
You did. I think we put it in, didn't we put it in the conservation easement?
Yeah, I thought so, okay.
Just one question, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
Your planner had mentioned that there are some other conditions that we need to discuss, and we'll discuss it at the next meeting.
We can discuss that.
If there's some, if there's some item that hasn't been provided or needs to be updated, I'd like to know now. We did, and I'm not saying this for timetable purposes, we received a certificate of completeness, we believe we're ending the edits to the HOA and the conservation easement. As far as I'm aware, we've submitted everything that needs to be submitted, and we've met all conditions to get an affirmative vote. If there's something else missing, I'd like to know it. I reviewed the staff report. The only change I saw from Mr. DeLuca's staff report was a recommendation that this go from an administrative final to a full final before the board. So again, and I'd like to discuss it tonight, so we can be in a position to get this board anything else that it requires.
No problem.
Sure, absolutely, so.
Do you want to, can you, can you two successfully do this offline?
Sure.
Yeah.
So I have some suggested conditions to add to it.
All right. Let's get them all on the table now.
Yep.
Because the next meeting, we have a 90-day window, they have, looking for a decision. I would like everything on the table now.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I think it's just clarification and stuff.
Okay.
And bringing in the conditions that were in the previous.
Okay. Chair has the floor right now, staff has the floor right now.
Okay, sure. So, Mr. Resnick, there, there are no additional things that I would be adding. It was going through those previous conditions and making sure they were either met or if they needed to be carried over. So by way of example, one of the conditions that you had mentioned you had a concern with last time, which was condition, let me rephrase it, it was condition three of the original master plan, which is now condition one of the preliminary plan, which says receipt of necessary specialist permits.
Wait, wait.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Receipt of necessary specialist permits and/or variances from the zoning board. Mr. Resnick, you had a concern about that last time. You didn't bring it up this time, but I did make note of it, and I have some suggested revisions to that, which I think will be satisfactory for both parties.
Sure, I may, I'd be happy to deal with that offline or as a workshop, however the chairman wants to do.
I think, well, and that's, so what I was getting at with the conditions is that some of them still need to be, they're not fully addressed, because this board hasn't blessed your homeowners association agreement or the conservation easement yet, so they are pending, but by next month, when everything, all the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted, those conditions will either be stricken, marked as, you know, met, or carried forward as need be. There's no additional condition that I'm adding at this point that I'm adding. So I would throw that to Mr. Friday, if there's some additional condition he would like to address.
Before it goes to Mr. Friday, I would like, at our next meeting, that every, everything would be buttoned up.
Absolutely.
So if you have to meet with staff or phone call, Zoom, whatever, but I'd like it all buttoned up. So if staff, if, if anybody on this board has anything else they want addressed, I want it on the table now, and, and I want it all addressed before our next meeting. So, Doc?
Before doesn't mean the day before.
No, I want it set, so, okay? Thank you. Jerry, anything? Rupert?
So, so I think, like I said, I think most of these have been talked about, but, um, so one of the conditions I think should be added is receipt of the necessary OWTS and wetland permit from RIDM for each lot at the building permit stage and development for the individual lots. I think that may have been an earlier decision, but I think it's protocol.
I think that's been discussed. I don't know if I saw it anywhere.
There's, there's no objection to that.
And I think that we already talked about this, and it may have already been done. The edge of the area protected by the conservation easement be marked in the field with permanent boundary markers prior to final plat recording.
And I, that, I believe that there's language in the conservation easement document to that effect, but you're suggesting an additional addition?
As a condition of.
Belt straps and suspenders, totally fine.
Yeah, and the next, the next one, you addressed the baseline document in the easement language itself, that it's really something that isn't part of the easement language, that a baseline document be prepared and submitted by the applicant. And I have suggested that it meet the standards either Land Trust Alliance, Accreditation Commission, or the U.S. Department of Agriculture, their standards for conservation easement baseline documents and prepared by a qualified conservation biologist. And you had some of that language in the easement, that this is, I think it's better as a condition than in the easement language itself.
No, there's no objection. Obviously, the, the intent of the conservation easement document is to give the town enforcement capabilities, and that condition, we're just bolstering, so there's no objection to that.
And then, and this came out of the staff notes, the applicant obtained permits for the town construction access locations.
I, I believe, excuse me to interrupt Mr. Friday, but I, I believe that at least what is required as of now has been obtained as far as permits. I believe there were two permits pulled. I had written an email to your DPW director. Joe, and I believe you were on it.
Yes, he did. The Steve Daino, the director of DPW, did respond. I'm sorry, Steve Daino, D-A-I-G-N-A-U-L-T.
I just saw it was in your staff notes, and we hadn't seen anything, so.
Right, so Ms. Friday.
So not necessary, that condition, okay.
That was one of the conditions that would be stricken. There was a notation from the director that, that the accessways would need to be redesigned. I believe their culverts need to be put in for drainage that, that currently runs along Clark Road.
And then, this is a new one, but it, I think it has a good rationale, and I think actually it can be a marketing tool for, for your client as well. I think that it'd be good for you all to prepare a one-page explanation of the conservation easement and the previous pavements, the previous pavements, and the reasons for the monitoring and the, you know, the maintenance of them. So that prospective buyers have that information. Because I, I run into all the time, it's people who are like, why does the town require these regulations? And it's just not clearly explained what the basis of the regulations is. And I think a one-page flyer explaining that to your prospective buyer so that they're not surprised by it and they understand the reason behind it, so they don't come in and say, oh, we want to pave this.
Sure, let me discuss with my client, but I, I don't see there being an issue in making that in an addendum or a.
Yeah, yeah, I would suggest if they do agree to it, it would be an addendum to a recorded document, because.
Okay.
You know, I mean, say the lot sold, and, you know, many people just buy the lot and they hold it, and, and the actual applicant. So if the document is recorded.
That makes sense.
The people are on notice to, to read what's in the land evidence records. Because I wouldn't, I wouldn't want the condition of approval to, for, for a title attorney to, to have to say, hey, did you get a flyer?
Right.
That says, you know, you have to vacuum your, your street, but I, if, if they agreed, I don't think it's a big thing that it would have to be an addendum to a recorded document, not a, a freestanding, in my opinion.
Yeah, well, I just think on one page, I mean, the legal language of the easement and.
Maybe, maybe it's an addendum or exhibit to a PNS.
Exhibit, yeah, yeah.
That makes, that makes sense.
Steve, perhaps Steve and I could get a level of comfort before the next meeting and, and.
Okay.
Great.
I just, I just have seen this, so, well, I've seen where people are like, why do we have these crazy regulations? They don't understand the basis for them, and they buy a place and they're like, oh, we're gonna clear this.
But, you know, Ms. Friday, ultimately, it's, it's up to the closing attorney and the people buying the property.
I understand.
To read the, the conservation easement homeowners association, you know, no one, frankly, no one does.
Well, that's, yeah, that's my, try and prevent the problems. And I've seen this, I've seen this in Maryland where developers want a project like this, where they did this at a, as a marketing tool, they really, like, they really worked at protecting the trees when they were developing, and they provided information to the homeowners, look, this is why we're doing this. And I think it's just as a real, it's, I think it's good communication so that people are like, why are we doing this? But also, I think it can be a good marketing tool.
Very good. Right? Anybody else have anything to add? Staff, anything to add?
No.
All right. I need a motion to, oh, I'm sorry, anything to add?
Nothing further.
All right, I need a motion to continue.
To continue.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
We don't have a date in January yet. You haven't approved our meeting dates yet? That's D three?
Would you, uh?
It's ten, the, the draft date, the proposed date is January twenty-second.
Would you accept a, a January date?
Well, yeah, we have to do it by, we have to do it to a date certain.
Right.
Can we put this on hold, approve them, uh, date for January, and then, how would we do that?
How would?
That's why you're here.
You are now the adult in the room.
Now, we would, we would technically adjourn this, adjourn it, temporarily adjourn, a motion to adjourn, take up the date calendar, approve the calendar, and then bring this back.
All right, so we're gonna table for a second. We'll adjourn?
Just, yeah, temporarily adjourn, motion to temporarily.
All right, I need a motion to temporarily adjourn public hearing.
So moved.
Seconded?
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Now, we are gonna skip to D three. Planning Board, twenty twenty-five meeting schedule, proposed meeting schedule, six p.m., Narragansett Town Hall, twenty-fifth, Fifth Avenue, Narragansett, Rhode Island. It is in a packet under D, it is D three. January meeting is the twenty-second, with all, a Wednesday, asterisks so we don't forget. February nineteenth is also a Wednesday. March eighteenth, April twenty-second, budget here in the previous week, so we're moving it. May twentieth, June seventeenth, July fifteenth, August nineteenth, September sixteenth, October twenty-one, November eighteen, December sixteen. All right, to the board members, anybody have changes, objections, concerns, issues? Doc?
Yeah, I, the idea of adding a Tuesday in my schedule, it's difficult. The Wednesdays, Thursdays, even Mondays make, make more sense to me.
So you'd like to move everything to Wednesday?
Well, I, Doc, the, the, those dates are for the special meeting. Right now, we're doing the annual meeting.
We're doing the annual meeting.
So these are the, the January and the February one you have here, tentatively, or I don't know, Wednesday?
They're on a Wednesday because of a, a Monday holiday, town council goes to Tuesday, so planning board goes to Wednesday.
Yeah, that's what I'm just saying, in terms of what's written here. So you need a motion to?
Well, I wanna, I want to know if anybody has objections all the way down. Jerry?
I'm okay with the plan.
Okay. Do I have a motion to accept the meeting dates for twenty twenty, can you believe, twenty twenty-five?
Yes.
Seconded?
So moved.
Seconded?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so I would need a motion to open the hearing up again.
I'll make that motion.
Seconded? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Counsel, are you good with Wednesday, July, January twenty-second?
Perfect.
That's what it's gonna be.
And I would need a motion.
Amen. Okay. I need a, a motion to continue the public hearing on Clark Road subdivision, preliminary plan, major subdivision with street plan, plat B, Lot twenty-seven.
So moved.
Seconded?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so the ayes have it, so we've continued until January.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, happy holidays, Merry Christmas.
Happy holidays, guys, thank you very much. Okay. All right, we now, does anybody need a break? You guys ready to roll?
Free.
I'll give Mike a hat off.
Hey, you know? This is, I gotta tell you, this one feels like we've given birth. This has been a while. All right, so I have, next on the agenda, site review. SVN Company LLC, plat NR, Lot ten thirty-three, six Agonquin Trail. Do you have the applicant?
Yep.
Okay. The applicant has submitted a request to legalize the construction of a rear yard deck with steps, rear yard addition, and the creation of three additional bedrooms at the above- referenced property. This project requires variances from dimensional reg, reg, regulations, section six point four, six point four B, for setbacks, lot coverage, floor ratio, area ratio, hardscape, and softscape. This project also requires a special use permit for the developer, and it's standards for homes exceeding four bedrooms, section twelve point two-three. The property is also located in a high-water table, limitations overlay district, section four point five, and requires a variance for site coverage. Existing condition, Lot ten thirty-three is approximately five thousand nine square feet, and located in R-ten zoning district and is substandard. Existing thirty-four by thirty-eight L-shaped five-bedroom dwelling with a two-foot front yard overhang, four-by-four front entry deck for step with steps, sixteen-by-twenty-three rear yard deck with steps, five-by-twelve second-story rear deck, and an L-shaped concrete patio with overhang and a ten-by-ten shed. Existing building lot coverage is approximately fifteen fifty-two square feet, thirty-one percent. Existing site coverage is approximately two thousand seven hundred eighty-six square feet, or fifty-five percent. Proposed improvements, this is a request to legalize prior construction of a sixteen-by-twenty-three attached rear yard deck with steps, and a thirteen-by-fourteen rear yard addition, and the creation of three additional bedrooms. So these were done without permits?
Correct, by the previous owners.
By the previous owners, but regardless. All right, proposed improvements associated with project reflection survey planned complete by Flynn Survey dated May eleventh, twenty twenty-four, elevation plans completed by Ocean State drafting. Lot ten thirty-three does not comply with dimensional regulations of section six point four, as the rear yard setback proposal is four feet. Twenty feet is required, and the proposed lot coverage is thirty-one percent, twenty-five percent is the max. Lot ten thirty-three does not comply with the dimensional regulations of section six point four, as the FAR for this project was calculated at point four-two, twenty-one hundred and two square feet. Maximum of a point three-five, or seventeen fifty square feet, is permitted on this lot. The lot also does not comply with a maximum hardscape, forty-three percent requirement, as sixty-six is proposed, or the minimum softscape, fifty percent, as twenty-four percent is proposed. This project is located in a high-water table, overlay district, section four point five, as the seasonal depth of groundwater is approximately eighteen to thirty-six inches below grade, classified as Zone B by the town of Narragansett. Ten thirty-three is served by the water and sewer, all right? Date lettered, uh, lettered date, October twenty-four, from engineering partners included was applicant approving this project as it relates to supplementary drainage requirements of seven point seven. Proposed parking area does not comply with twelve twenty-three of the zoning ordinance, as it refers to section point nine of the zoning ordinance, three hundred square foot per bedroom. The project proposed eighteen, thirteen eighty-two square feet, lawn site parking for a five-bedroom dwelling, or fifteen hundred square feet is required. Future land use designation of this property is residential, high to moderate density. The project is proposed, appears to be, comply with land use component of the comprehensive plan. Relief slot, section four point five, high-water table limitations overlay district, thirty-three percent site coverage variance. Section six point four, dimensional regulation, sixteen-foot rear yard setback variance, six percent lot coverage variance. Section six point four B, dimensional regulations, point zero-seven or three hundred and fifty-two square foot floor area ratio variance, twenty-three percent hardscape variance, twenty-six percent front yard softscape variance, section twelve point two-three, development standards for home exceed four-bedroom special use permit. You want to identify yourself?
Yep, I'm Walter Musto, one of the managing partners of SBN Co.
Okay, you're not represented by counsel?
No.
Okay. I've read everything in the record because of the uniqueness of this, so, um, please present.
Excuse me.
Yeah.
Can you spell your last name for us?
Musto, M-U-S-T-O.
Okay, great, thank you, Walter.
Yeah, and so SBN Co. is just myself and, and my fiancee. We have two properties under, so it's not like a big company. So we don't have a lawyer or anything like that. We bought this property about a year and a half ago now. And when we bought it, it, it wasn't in great condition. Yeah, it wasn't finished on the outside, all the siding had been taken off. The previous one I had planned to, to re-sign, and he hadn't done it in like three or four years. For a lot of things like that, a lot of unfinished projects. Fortunately, unfortunately, we had finished putting on an addition in a deck and added bedrooms to the basement. We bought it knowing the challenges that had come with it. We looked very closely with the town, the building inspector, and with the engineering to make sure that everything that was added was at least up to code. So got the permits to, like, the build permits, even though it was already built, but have the appropriate people go in and check out the electric, the, the, the products that were used to add to the addition and to the deck. We had a shed moved off of the property and a compliant shed moved onto the property. So we've done everything that we can so far to make sure that the house is up to code for all of the changes that were made without permits. And now we're hoping to take those next steps to say that the, the town will agree that we can leave it as it is. We're not planning to add anymore anything. It's just getting right with the town for the builds that were done before we, we bought it, basically.
And talking to the building inspector, a house has to come up, the entire house has to come up to today's code. So based on the, the date that you pulled the permit, so, just so everybody understands. Usually I just immediately go, are you finished, by the way?
Yep.
Usually I, I immediately go to the board, but I, I'm gonna, I have a couple of questions preliminary because I think it's, goes to the heart. Is this gonna be occupied by you and your fiancee, or is this an investment property?
It's a little bit of both, so it's college students during the, the college season, and then we live it in the summer.
Okay, is it now, do you have people living in it now?
Yeah, we have three, three students.
Three students. Three students on the lease. So I've gone by there quite a few times.
Yeah.
And the same eight cars are there.
Okay.
I think I submitted pictures. I don't know, Ryan, if you've got those.
We have ones that are relative to the building permit for parking purposes.
Yeah, I, I took pictures of the actual cars there.
Okay.
There they are. So, some kind of curious as to how many people are actually living there and, you know.
Yeah, no, I.
It doesn't make me comfortable with, I mean, you got an illegal house and, you know, and a boatload of cars.
Yeah.
So I'm trying to figure out, you know, how much enhance is going on here and what's going on down the road. Because you're asking for a big, you're asking for a great deal of variances. My predecessor used to say, if you get beyond three. But my predecessor used to say, if you get beyond three, you're up till.
Yeah.
Um, so you're talking good faith there, and, you know, you leave me with questions. I just wanted this clarified, so you're saying there are three people living here?
Yeah, there are, well, there are three people on the lease, um, I'm, I'm sure that there are two other people that are at least crashing there.
So, so, do you understand that doesn't make my comfort level any higher as to maintenance of this property as a five-bedroom?
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
All right. All right. If you have nothing more to present, uh, go through the board. Doc?
Yeah, just, uh, on a preliminary basis, you know, uh, I think our council has pointed this out before. When you bought this, you, you were responsible for trials, not the previous owner. You know that.
Definitely.
Legals, you're responsible.
Yeah.
So, on the hard nose, hopefully you already know that. There are things that you can do to modify this, this property and, and make it less, uh, offensive besides the five bedrooms and the, you know, the eight cars, uh, I think you were here for the previous presentation, but that's only a handful of people. There are a thousand people in this town who are up to here with this over-usage of property. Uh, I'm sure you know that. Take me, uh, take me inside, if you would, to the basement, okay? Thank you. So, first thing I would ask you, this is going outside, right here?
Correct, yeah.
And the second way out is here?
Correct.
Oh, so you have two, two ways to get in and out.
Two ways to get in and out, and then we have, um, windows in all the bedrooms that, uh, lead to apartments for, for escape. Yeah, the, the...
You can pop them in, though?
Yeah.
Okay. Can you, show me the property, edges of a property, uh, on an aerial view, if you would. Yeah, what's the distance here?
Four point eight feet.
What is it, four?
Four point eight feet.
Four point eight feet, there you go. I'll just... I'm missing something in terms of, I'm looking at here. So this is four point eight here.
Mm-hmm. Correct.
And this is a, a decking?
Yeah. No, just a overhang to the...
The overhang?
To the roof, yeah. The, uh, the additional, like, rectangle that you see there, that was an addition that was put on, and then there's the deck behind it.
And because you have this, this massive over, uh, over, uh, filling of the lot percentage-wise, you, you, in your application here, you weren't talking about at least trying here, taking a bit of this shed, or any of the other, uh... concrete, or whatever, you, you are asking to, to this town and this board to accept what you're presenting here, and for us to legalize it?
Well, we, every step of the way...
It's beyond me here, excuse me.
Well, I understand what you're saying when, when you, when you put it that way, but, though, every step of the way, we've talked to engineering, and we've talked to, um, the building inspector. So, this is our first time doing something like this, we felt like we were following all the right steps, they gave us guidance on what type of tests we needed run, um, what type of insulation we needed on the addition, all of the things to, to, to make sure it was approved by them, and you can probably see some of the things that we went through. So, we were just really, like, open and honestly talking to them, saying, even, even before we bought it, we had meetings with Wayne, saying, we want to be right with the town, Wayne was, was at the location, um, gave us a hit list of things that we needed to do, we checked off each one. Um, so we were under the impression that, you know, like, we're, we're trying to be good citizens and do a good job with what we had purchased, um, that we would, you know, get consideration, or at least good guidance on what the next steps are. Um, we, we're not opposed to anything that you recommend, it's just saying, like, we're, we're at this point now where we'd like to understand what next steps would be.
Yeah, if you came in and say you were taking off the decks, and you were, you were trying to come up as close as you could to what the, the zoning rules and regulations are, I mean, I think we, we might have some kind of a conversation here. But what you're asking us is to, is to sanctify what the previous owner did, because it's there. We, we, you know, we worked years on a town comprehensive plan, right? You know that, hopefully you do. And for us, as a board, to agree with what you're, you're asking, the, the tremendous number of variances, et cetera, on this particular property, and five bedrooms on this particular property? It's just, hmm, just way beyond...
You know where I'm coming from, right?
Yes, yeah.
All right.
And I don't wanna, I, I don't, I don't think that was the, you know, the overall intention, it was really, like, we've been taking steps all along the way, and so, it, it, it was more so to say, what is the recommendation? You know, like, we, like I said, you can look at the, the history of what we've done over the last year and a half, and there's been a lot invested in, um, in, uh, from what we understood was required from engineering and from the housing, and from the, from the building inspector. Um, we did a lot to get to this point, so, to understand what you would recommend...
Well, if you sat down with a good attorney in real estate, they would tell you, you are buying a big problem here. You might be able to get, uh, three bedrooms out, out of something like this, you might, blah, 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 in terms of, of getting rid of some of your hardscape, et cetera. But you, you know, as I said, to, to start my, my conversation here, when you buy, you own it.
Yeah.
And you own all the problems that the previous, uh, owner introduced here. And to ask us to, I, so, as I said, it's beyond me. How can we sanctify this? You can't, it's so overbuilt.
Okay.
It's so overdone.
I, I, I want to interrupt, because I think, I see frustration on your face, and I also see confusion and misunderstanding. The building department deals with the building, HVAC, electrical, all of that. We deal with zoning. We're totally separate.
Yeah.
And whether you should come to us first, or go to them first, it, it, there's no good or bad answer to it. You're art, you're at the next step, or another step, you can go any route you want, you're at another step. Our criteria and what we look at is totally different than what they look at. Now, we do go to them, so, I know in talking to, uh, Troy, they required the proper windows because they had a concern of access egress. Um, but, so, I just want to set you, because I can see the confusion, and I can see kind of like, what's going on here. We're not submarine-ing you, we're not countering them. They deal with the building, now we deal with the zoning.
Yeah.
And, you know, as I said, typically when people come in here for a couple of variances, you get beyond that, and there were flags everywhere.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah.
So, does that help you a little bit?
It does, yeah, yeah. And, I, yeah, I think I...
Not that it's gonna make it any better.
No, all right, I get ya, and, and I, and that's, I just don't want the impression that we came in here saying, hey, we got this big thing, and we want you to, we want to approve this, like, my understanding with this step is that we get the recommendations of what could be approval, could be, um, could be approved, and if we, and if we have to make changes, we can. The one thing I want to say about the five bedrooms, though, that was not an addition to the footprint, that was, that was finishing the basement, I don't know if that makes a, a difference at all. The, the addition is kind of like a, a dining room and a, a storage room underneath.
Is anybody living in that storage room?
No.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, you can, like, sorry, it was not...
Are you sure about that?
Yeah. A hundred, yeah, a hundred percent, it's not, it's, it's, but actually, they can't even get into it, we, we have that lot.
All right. Okay. Doc, anything else?
No, not right now.
Okay.
Catch my breath.
Go for it. Jerry?
That storage room, does it have sliders on one side?
It does, yeah, sliders on one side, and a large window on the other.
And a large window on the other side. So, to me, it almost looks like six bedrooms. And if you're asking what we, what you should, what our advice is, it would be to make it a three-bedroom, which, it's a legal three-bedroom. I don't think it's reasonable to ask us to expand to a five-bedroom. When you bought the house, you know, at first I thought maybe it was the seller, but I don't know if it's public knowledge, the purchase price of your house?
It is, it's public, and I have it too.
Uh, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
Yeah.
Okay. Did you think you were buying a five-bedroom house in Narragansett for four hundred and fifty thousand? If we okayed this five-bedroom, the value would probably go up to eight hundred thousand.
Uh, one point three million.
There you have it. So, we don't want to reward buyers to come in, take a chance, spend a few dollars, come to the town, and take a shot. And that's, that's the way it feels like to me, I'm sorry, I, really, with all due respect.
That, I understand that impression, I don't, I don't think you saw the house when we bought it, though, it wasn't, it wasn't just a two-dollar...
I'm sure the house is safe, but it's a...
No, no.
But it's a three-bedroom home, I think walls have to come down on that lower floor. There's, it's, there's, as Doc, as Doc pointed out, it's just too numerous to, to mention, all the changes that, for me to look at, uh, to, um, to try to seek my approval. I mean, to me, it's a perfect college dream, they get three bedrooms and a bar. I mean, it's not good, it's really, really not good. And the eight cars is a testament to what a problem it is now, and can be going forward. That's, that's, uh, in my say, thank you.
Rupert?
Yeah, so, when I look, without walking through, when I look at this drawing, I feel like the storage is another bedroom too. With windows on the, with windows on the side.
It's, it's, it's not finished, it's, it's not, there, and there's, uh, it's, it's literally storage there. But like, I, I'm being honest with you with everything, I, I want to be open and honest, because we, we want to be there for a long time, um, as individuals, we actually purchased the lot next door.
I was gonna ask about that, because it, it seems like the encouragement's on both sides. So this lot, did you, you buy it a lot on the left or the right?
Uh, to the left, yeah, we're facing it right there in our one three two.
Okay.
Um, so we planned on being here for a long time, I'm a Rhode Islander all my life, I've loved Narragansett all my life, but I've never really hung out in, in Bonnet, we rented a house about four years ago, and like, fell in love with it even more. I can't tell you, with my partner, I live in Chicago, so, that's why the summers are so, uh, great for us to, to live there then, and, and make a little money as a college rental.
And so that, there's a shed here, right adjacent, or you...
That's not ours.
Okay.
That's the previous owner, my understanding is he's renting from the landowner, that's whatever.
Okay.
It was a huge monstrosity that was in there.
Because it looks like the sidewalks go from your driveway there.
He put papers in, but, um, that, it was just, it was too egregious, so we told him, yeah, I had to move it off of the lot before we would buy, and that's, that's where I moved it to.
Okay. Yeah, I, I guess, um... Sort of adding, I mean, it, it, and I'm not sure, Steve, this is two, two permits, so are we making two decisions?
Um, you know, I, I mean, you can, um, because they're under two different standards. However, I, probably they're, both requests are, sounds like gonna be negative recommendations anyway, so, and unless you feel that the motion is bifurcated for a positive recommendation...
No, no, I just, I just, I...
I, I, no, I think you can do it at a hundred one.
Yeah, so, so, um, I mean, the deck, there's, so there's new standards in the state for decks, uh, on sub, not decks, for construction on substandard lots, and even with the new standards, you need a, a ten-foot setback from the, from the yard.
Yeah.
And yet, this is, um, I don't know if it is, but it's, it's less than that.
Right, yeah, it's, it's probably five or six, I mean...
And then, then, the, um, survey we have, it looks like the survey is different than what's on the ground. Um, like, well, like, the deck shows, uh, sort of a flare on the right side.
Yeah.
And it doesn't look from the aerial like that's there.
Yeah, it's not, so that was one of the things that we had to, to fix, that deck was totally open on one side, I think you had a pool there before, um, so we remediated that by straightening that out and closing off that side. We also took off the stairs on the other side, and closed that up. There was a, the house was not in good shape, so when we talk about the price, that was the reason why we thought we were getting a, a good price, and if we put the money into it, that we thought, you know, we were hoping, like, yeah, if, if we, uh, finish the house, if there was so much of it that was unfinished, um, that the benefit would be that we have a, a higher-priced house also. But yeah, there's probably still some pictures on Zillow where you can see, like, it was unfinished, the front stairs weren't done. Uh, there was a whole bathroom that had been torn out, um, it was just an, like, empty room. Pretty much every room needed some significant renovation. Yeah, you can see that was a big shed.
Anything else?
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I mean, my other concerns have already been really raised. It, it, I'm sort of echoing, uh, what my colleagues have said, and, you know, sort of, if we approved this as, okay, as built, that we create a rural market for cottage industry where developers come in and add stuff that's not legal, not get building permits, and insult to somebody else, and they come in and ask for approvals.
Right. Yeah, I understand, I understand that point.
Um, my turn, and, and Doc said he's, he's kind of hard on this stuff, I'm usually kind of open to help, too. And we are as a board, if you can sell us a bit of a conversation.
Sure.
And we try to help. Um, I've got some real concerns, and one of them, you know, you're telling us, you know, you're operating in good faith, and I accept that. Um, but I also have to weigh that against, you say there's three kids on the lease, you admit there's probably two or three more crashing there, and there's like eight. So, it's like, I gotta wonder, if we legalize this, what do we got going on here? And, and how much oversight is there gonna be?
Yeah.
So, we're looking at, that goes both ways.
Yeah.
Um, I have some questions on structural, that I just need to clarify in my own mind. Um, can we go to the bottom sources? Okay, uh, this wall, I presume this is the existing foundation wall?
Correct.
Okay, and, and there's no opening between here and here?
Correct.
Okay. This is a full bath, correct?
Yes. Yeah.
All right, I just want to make sure.
Hang on, this is...
It says shower, bath, toilet, and so...
Yeah, yes, correct, yeah, there's a small bath, and then there's a, the larger one.
And this is a larger one?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, and this is the only access egress out, and then the other access egress is upstairs?
Correct.
Okay. Um, so, we have discretion as an advisory group, but we are also answer to the law, and the law is, is hardship. And that's really what this goes to, you bought a home, speculative, though it may be, but you bought a home, and is there hardship within this purchase? You, and I spend a lot of time, because I'm trying to look to accommodate things. Um, you bought the home for four fifty, uh, the, and looked at the sales of, of three-bedroom homes, because this is on the town's record, a legal three-bedroom. Uh, is, in that neighborhood, uh, at the time of your purchase, the median sale price is one point three, uh, million dollars for a three-bedroom home. So, if you did not know that there were deficiencies, you should have known. Um, so, as to, as to hardship, um, the applicant purchased a home for a sum of approximately four hundred and fifty thousand, the neighborhood with median price of home sales sold, a three-bedroom complimentary home, was one point three one five million dollars. Applicant purchased the home with an MLS listing of three bedrooms, two baths. Um, you discovered that there were five bedrooms and three bathrooms. Uh, price, price discrepancy to the market really should have set off alarms. Uh, legal, uh, listing with the town is that a three-bedroom, um, you should have known that the home was not in compliance, and it is key here, all right? State law is clear that the buyer purchases the assets and incurs the liability, uh, of, of this, and that is state law. So, the hardship, the question, one of the first tests of hardship is, is this variance of a five-bedroom, decks, hardscape, et cetera, and you also have a catch twenty-two... decks, hardscape, et cetera, and you also have a CUC 22 here with hardscape and ratios and all of that with five bedrooms. It actually causes you more problem as far as, or us more problems in approving a larger variance. And our job is to minimize variances. Um, is not granted, does not amount to an American convenience. And it doesn't, as the purchase, purchaser bought a home, listed it in the MLS, and multiple websites as three-bedroom, not five-bedroom. The purchase price was 450,000, which is 29, almost 30% of the market rate at the time. It reflects an issue in the home of that, um, uh, in relation to other three-bedroom homes in the marketplace. That the house is listed as a legal three-bedroom, with the town is key. Allows finding the purchase of a reasonable enjoyment. So, this is the question, another question of hardship is minimal... Hardship is not a resultant. It's, uh, suffer the owner, and the variance is not granted, uh, more than American convenience. So, uh, you purchased a three-bedroom house that was listed as a three-bedroom house. Purchase price, even for a three-bedroom house, is a fraction. It's listed as a legal three-bedroom house. So, there really should be no assumption on your part or anybody's part that we must make this a five-bedroom house. You get full enjoyment out of what you purchased, and that was a three-bedroom house. So you get not even minimal, but full enjoyment of the home. The fact that the use may be more profitable, or that the structure be more valuable after the request of relief, i.e. a three-bedroom house versus a five-bedroom house, uh, is greater, shall not be, uh, granted relief. Rhode Island state law and case law is very clear on this. We don't have the responsibility of making you profitable. And in fact, I would argue that as a three-bedroom, the differential before, between 450, even if you put the money in, that I'm assuming you put in so far, if you flipped it, you would still see a huge profit. It should not be any reasonable, uh, assumption on the part of the applicant that they are entitled by right or other to anything more than a three-bedroom home, given the circumstances. I would also point that any board committee, uh, any board or committee that grants said variances, that they grant the homeowners and/or builders carte blanche, um, to circumvent all town protections and standards to build whatever they want, and then, when found out, they simply are made, request to be made legal. This is a, a bad precedent that no board or committee should set, and that no town should tolerate. I, I, there's a paper road in the back, um, right here, and that deck almost comes to it. I'm sorry, I just, it should have meant the setback. Even, even in the substandard new regulations, it doesn't meet that subject. Can I go back to the floor plan? So, again, we've got three people on the lease, at least five people crashing there, maybe six, and then maybe another two on top of that. So, I, I, I'm...
It's really not that. I do wanna say it's not that. They're all boys that have girlfriends. It, it, so it's really not more people crashing, I promise you.
If, if you're the neighbors on that skinny road, I mean, you can't even turn around that road. Eight cars is considerable. Okay? Whether they are, they're 24/7 and not actually living there, but staying there, whatever the circumstances. But here's my concern, is if, if we legalize these five bedrooms, that, we're looking at that. This is, just over-densifies this property. To me, I, I am comfortable with three bedrooms because it is legally recognized by the town as a three-bedroom. Uh, this is the main floor. Uh, what I would see, and, and again, I'm not telling you what to do, this is up to you, but if you take these closets out, this becomes a great room. Can I go to the basement, please? The bar comes out, and this comes out. This becomes a master suite, which is really nice for you to stay there, and then you've got two bedrooms. That's a three-bedroom home. It still probably exceeds FAR, and we haven't even addressed FAR in this. Which is...
You may not know it, but it is.
Yeah, okay, so we have, because building just exploded as far as people built big, the people that live here all the time are saying they were losing the identities of their neighborhoods. It was no longer little beach homes or cottages, et cetera. We're knocking down building McMansions. So we instituted a floor-area ratio. So based on the size of your lot, circumstances of the lot, you're allowed X square feet of living space.
Yeah, I understand.
And this is not a basement, 'cause this is at ground level. So this enters into FAR. And so, I, I, I'm not even gonna address that at this point in time. But based on our legal limitations as far as hardship, I cannot find anything in my imagination to, to circumvent that. And, and I, I would find it a very poor precedent for any committee, any board, to grant this, because we're just opening the floodgates and granting anybody to build anything at any point in time. And I, I, my heart feels for you because you bought this. But the reality is, you, you bought the mess.
Right.
Too. Um, and, and I, we're not in the business of, of granting people mea culpa. We're in the business of protecting the neighbors, the people that are going to be the next people buying the home. I'm sorry, I, I cannot find any way to grant this.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Is it time for a motion?
It may be. All right. Any, uh, redirect. Doc, Doc, on redirect?
No, obviously, I'm, I, I can't support this.
Chair?
Yeah, I... Mr. Muster, would you consider, or Mr. Chair, a continuation so that he can go and maybe hire an attorney and revise the variance request and do some major work with this? Like, instead of going to the zoning board with the same, with, without any changes? Have you, have you addressed, have you spoken to council on this?
Have you?
No, we haven't. And it, yeah, I mean, I can't wait.
I guess, I guess to the point, let me clarify. So, he's giving you an opportunity here, which we do. So my question is more important because it, it determines whether or not this is a moot point or not. In your mind, uh, are you, would you consider a three-bedroom versus a five-bedroom, or you want the five-bedroom?
Oh, no, we would consider, yeah, we would consider that.
So, so you've kind of heard the flavor where the board's going. So we make a, and, and this is your decision. If we make a decision tonight, you kind of understand where we're going. So what has been put on the table, and we need to agree to it, but I need you to say whether or not it's something you can take advantage of. We can continue this, and then you could come in with something different. If you want, I'm not telling you that that's gonna get passed.
Right, right.
I'm just telling you, as it stands now, you've heard the board. So the question is, do you want to continue with this? You'll get our decision, and then you'll go to zoning, and you get there. Or would you like this board to continue this and give you an opportunity at a later date to come in with maybe revised plans, et cetera, so forth and so on? What would you like to do?
And with the, the latter.
Okay. Do I, uh, any objections?
I want, I want some more suggestions in, in addition to the ones that were presented. Um, if you go to the, uh, I don't know, the, uh, either the survey or the, or the, the area. So, um, uh, you can shorten this deck some.
Right.
Yeah.
And, uh, I think with the new standards, I think the setback's 10 feet or something, right? And then the other thing I think you can do, because you own the adjacent lot, you can merge the lots, which give you more land area related to the floor area ratio.
And parking.
And parking.
Right.
Which would reduce your variance needs.
Yeah. But, so besides the, the deck, and I appreciate all the feedback. I am taking it as something that, and we, we want to make this right. That was our intention the whole way through. Besides the deck and saying that some of the interior has changed to make it a three-bedroom, is there anything else major that you're seeing here?
Well, sir...
Is that too many?
Yeah.
We're not telling you that that's gonna get it approved. I don't, I don't want, I don't want to lead you into saying, hey, if we do this, they're gonna approve this. What I'm telling you right now is if you listen, you've heard the objections. Whatever adjustments you made, that's for you to make, and then we come back in and we discuss it again.
One other problem I see in reviewing it is, um, uh, this, this paving here, it's like an encouragement on the adjoining lot.
Okay. All right, that's good too. Some of the stuff, like I think with the original build, I, I don't know that he, he changed any of that, but, I mean, we, we can...
Yeah, the original, the original building is really close to that. It's not five feet from the property line.
Yeah, there's a, there's a fire code thing. You have to get at least five feet up for the guy with the pack, or the woman with the big pack, to get around to fight the fire, you know, so that was, that's another issue. Where people say, well, there's no fence there. Yeah, but if the neighbor next door puts a chain link fence up, or how about a nice stone wall? I have a lot of stone walls here in New England. The fire people can't, they can't, you can imagine, so.
That is just paved, though, so that, yeah, that's a, that's a throughway for...
Yeah, but it goes, it goes to your hearts, Keith. Whatever's on your, whatever's on your property goes to your hearts.
And that's where council comes in. Will be a tremendous help to you.
Yeah.
Steph?
I've got nothing else said. You guys go with me.
Um, we want to continue.
Any, any questions, any more questions from, from the board? All right, I need a motion to continue. The board is so inclined.
Move to continue.
I need a seconded.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Fine.
All right, we're gonna continue this. You notify the staff when you're ready to come in.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
All right?
All right, thank you.
And if you don't understand calculations and things like that, they can help you with that.
Yeah, they've all been a big help. Like, we did get the rainwater garden that we have to put in, so. Hopefully, we've got so much information that we don't need a lot more to make the changes.
Good luck.
Okay. Thank you very much.
It's always, it's, it's unfortunate this happens, and I got a feeling it's probably a lot more of these around town than we really want.
I feel like I wish we came here first, you know, like, I really tried to go eyes open. And that was one of the steps. And the steps that we got were get everything right, and then go to zoning, get everything right structurally. Um, instead, I think it made sense to go to zoning and say, what's really possible, right, and then, then do the work on it.
Okay.
Uh, but we are trying, and, you know, we promised to be good, good in Merrickansett.
You might want to check on your tenants.
I will, I will talk to them about the parking and too many cars. I, I know it's three and two. I mean, I know, and they're, they're good, good kids. They, they go to every house. They introduce themselves. They're really, really good kids. Uh, but they're juniors in college, and I know they have, they have girlfriends, and I think that's what...
And part of the problem is you don't have enough parking to accommodate it, so, okay.
Truly, we, we, well, you want to know the story on that?
No, no, no.
It's requirements.
Thank you, but, on that note.
Then we know a good lawyer. Thanks, Eric.
Thank you much. Okay, um, Mr. Callahan, welcome.
Hey, Thomas, Thomas. Good evening.
So we are at...
You know we continue.
I heard that. You're at C1.
I'm at C1. I am at C1, but I make sure that I'm at C1. All right, guys, we're at C1.
Inclusionary zoning.
All right, inclusionary zoning, as I, I, as you all know, this was not intended at all to be a finished document. It is not. It is, uh, been put together diligently and delicately by staff to give us all the elements that have been going on, uh, since this was first put together. And then, the goal is that we would shape, uh, we would, we would shape the end recommendation that would go to the town council. So at this point in time, I'm gonna, Jill, if you would like to kind of go over some things?
Sure.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. So, um, at the last meeting, we talked about that, about either having a draft ordinance together or having more of a workshop, and you guys opted for both. So you've got both. You have a draft in your, um, in your packets, and I do cover a little bit of the draft, um, in the following, in the next two or three slides. But I wanted to talk about the inclusionary zoning ordinance, um, changes that take effect to January 1st, 2025. As you may recall, uh, we struck inclusionary zoning from the last changes we set up a year ago this time because the mathematical calculations made them untenable. It quadrupled density on lots, and, um, it was a, it was a mathematical, um, quagmire, which the state fixed. Um, it was brought to their attention. We were the only community to strike inclusionary zoning, and, and they did, uh, make changes to their, uh, to their law, and those took effect in June. So here we are, taking a look at them again. Um, the biggest changes are the changes of, uh, the percentages required for affordable units. So it was, at the last score, it was 25%, and now it's 15%. Um, changes in the density bonus from two to one to one to one. So that means, so for every affordable unit, it's, instead of getting two market rates, you now get one market rate, and that's part of where the mathematical issue was. Um, and the ordinance requires zoning, uh, incentives or subsidies, uh, but it's not necessarily an exclusive list. So we can put together a list of subsidies, but it doesn't mean the applicant can come up with something else. They can ask the board for it. And a fee and lieu is allowed, but not required in their parameters. Kind of where I want to spend the bulk of tonight talking about, unless you, right off the bat, want to scratch it. So, if we move on to the next slide, I did a little bit of a, um, I tried to compare what we had and then with the current statute. So you can see right there, the changes highlighted in yellow is that 15%, so it went from 25 to 15%. And the, the note down there in the blue is that, sort of, that mathematical issue, which is, when you start adding all, all the math, that at the, the end line is you might end up with a little bit less than 15%. So they, they put that note, the general assembly put that note in there, so you, you didn't try to constantly get to that number, otherwise you, you keep adding and never getting there. So the proposed, um, the ordinance that I drafted, uh, from previous that you had, that was stricken last year, I just grabbed that again and used that as a baseline. We tried to use that as a working document. Um, and made some changes to that. So you can see right there, we referenced, um, the law. And then under inclusionary requirements, we put in that affordable, um, that 15% affordable units, um, after the density bonus. And then I struck right now, uh, for the moment, I have stricken the fee and lieu reference, and we'll get there. So that was the, the first page of our ordinance. So if there are any questions, by the way, feel free to stop me as we, okay. All right, if we go to the second, um, the second page, which is again, the current statute on the left-hand side, and this is our previous ordinance with some draft and revisions, uh, for the density bonus. So on the left-hand side, you're gonna see, yep, where it goes from the two, uh, market rates to one. And then I have it highlighted here, larger density bonuses for the provisions. We can, we can, that's a conversation point I think we should have. And then the total number of units, um, so it, it talks about the calculations. So if you have, for instance, a five, if, if, one of the suggestions that I'm making in here is that inclusionary zoning kick in. It did kick in prior to, uh, prior to the changes in state law and our striking of inclusion last year. Inclusionary zoning, uh, kicked in at the same level as a master, um, I'm sorry, as a major subdivision. So it's six units, so more than five. Um, it does not have to match the state law, as you, as folks know full well, that they changed the subdivision, uh, major subdivision threshold from five to, uh, more than five to 10. So essentially, six to 10. They gave an additional four units. I have drafted, and it's up for conversation, that inclusionary zoning kick in at five units or more. So that's a talking point you guys might want to consider. And then it talks about the incentives. So if you look at the original draft, you'll see that I have, um, I have right now written out fee and lieu. But we offer additional incentives. So one of the things that we offer, we currently did off, we did offer, and I suggested we keep it, is the reduction in parking requirements. Um, and then that note about a municipality... And then that note about a municipality shall provide, and the applicant may request additional zoning incentives and/or government subsidies. So on the left-hand side, you can see I grabbed the definition for municipal government subsidy, so you knew what that meant. And then on the right-hand side, I add, just added in that language that said, you can ask for something even if it isn't in our ordinance. That's, that's the state law. So even if you don't identify it, so you, it, it, in a way, in a, in a way, it takes the burden off you from trying to have to come up with every single subsidy, because if someone comes up with something, they can always ask you for it, and then you can decide at that, at that time. So, and then at the bottom, I just have a couple of other things of, well, one thing I wrote here, I had typed up, and then one thing I wrote down here, which is, one of the other things we do outside of the parking is, our department has the ability to waive application fees for any planning board authority process. So if it comes in, there are application of fees associated, associated with it. We, we have the ability in our department to waive those fees. I did check, just, I checked with the engineering department and the building inspections department to see if they had the ability to also waive fees, even if it was on a proportional discount. So a building, a billing fees, if it was a 20% affordable or 50% affordable inclusionary zoning, could they waive 50% of the fees? I got an answer that, which is, it's a lot more complicated than, than I had hoped, than it would just cutting it in half. Because it's, because those fees are in the municipal, they're in the ordinance that would require a fee change on that end. So it certainly is something that could happen, but it's, it's not something, it's other steps that have to happen before it can happen here.
Just don't tell anybody. Big scary problem.
And we're not on tape, Dr. Hale, so.
I'm just thinking procedurally, if, if that is something that we would like to explore, we could get, at least get the ball rolling and see where it lands.
I, so I would suggest that this board consider putting something on the books and crawling before you walk. There's a high, there's a probability that things will change again in June. But if you put something on the books, just to have some inclusionary zoning in, even if it's not everything that you want, and then you can go back and, and do that legwork, you know, and figure out if there are other development incentives. One of the things I, I thought about, and I didn't do the full, and take it to its mathematical end. But, you know, if, if there was an affordable accessory dwelling unit, then could you get a half a market rate? And then you, you up that up to two. So if you had a five lot subdivision, and you had two affordable set accessory units, do you get, you know, would you give, would you give a density bonus for that, for that restricted affordable accessory dwelling unit? So those things need to be worked out, but I do suggest that you might want to put something on this. All kinds of information out there on how you want to go. I looked at a couple of different towns. I'm going to be honest with you, some of our other towns, neighboring towns haven't done anything. They haven't, they still have old, old regulations on the books. So it was difficult to find anything real, real fresh. But that's just my suggestion, you can certainly do, you can, it's your prerogative how you'd like to move forward. But I think the, the biggest issue is that fee and lieu. So we did have a fee and lieu for partial units. And I went through and I looked at the parameters for, for fee and lieu, and you can see them highlighted here. I'll, I'll tell you what they are up here, and then when we flip to the next page, you'll actually see them written out. But the first one, you'll see on line 25, if you're looking at your, your, your law, talks about no, they shall not, shall not be eligible for a density bonus. So the parameters are if you apply, if you enact fee, if you take advantage of fee and lieu, then there's no density bonus. And that's for the applicant, they can't apply for the density bonus. The second part is, it's automatically a planning board review if you do, if you do fee and lieu. The third, which I think you're ready for passing out, is the fees. So the fee is based on the 80% AMI minus the cost per unit. So that's about 100, when you look at the 2024 documentation, it's about $142,000. That same five lot subdivision, as an example, requires 1.2 units. I thought it was a nice, easy number that says, shows you the, the partial unit that you might get. And that works out to about $28,000 at point two. Now, the law says you can't ask for, you, you have, the minimum threshold is $40,000. But the price per home in Narragansett is, and this, I think, is a very conservative estimate, is $406,000 per unit, I'm sorry, per unit, it's $406,000. So as you can imagine, it could take a long time before you get enough money to build one unit. The other option is partial units round up, and the developer has to build them. So you just require the developer to build a second unit, and then you have two units as opposed to taking a fee. And the reason why that, the concern on my part right now about the fee is because when you get to the last two points of this document on four, so, so it's first referenced on the right-hand column under line seven, and then it's referenced again under line 16, which basically says that the money that you take from fee and lieu has to be used within three years of the receipt, or it's required to be returned to the state. So the state just takes the money back. You can give it to the state immediately, and they'll take it, or you, you have to give it back to them in three years. And there's required that that money can only be used for affordable housing creation, and it has to be used for 80% AMI, and that's, so it couldn't be used for anything else. It couldn't be used, unlike the bond money that was just passed, could be used for different things. This has to be for affordable housing creation, you couldn't use it for due diligence or any, any other thought that you might have. And then the last, the last two things, of course, is that in order to take fee and lieu, that process would need to be in our comprehensive plan, which it isn't at the moment, and it wouldn't, the process would need to be outlined in our zoning ordinance, which it isn't at the moment. So that, those things we'd have to do ahead of time, and last thing is we'd be reporting yearly to the state.
So if we did not have fee and lieu, the statute is very clear that the developer can propose things. So they could actually propose fee and lieu if we didn't have one.
Uh, yeah, I think, I think that falls under municipal subsidy. They could, but you would have the prerogative to not accept that.
Right.
Or, or if it's written right into the ordinance that, that all partial units, you know, and shall be rounded up, then I think it's clear to any developer at that point that there's no option for fee and lieu.
Which I prefer, yes. I want the unit, we need the unit, but that's my personal opinion.
I, I, I agree. I mean, I think that fee and lieu shifts the burden from building the units from the developer to the town. And, and that, I know every year in the general assembly, the legislation, it gets returned to the developer, if it's not used in so many years, and so not sent to the state is what it's set up, yeah.
Well, with two, one of the other things about fee and lieu is it, there's, as Mr. Freddie pointed out in past meetings, there's not a very good receiving end here in Narragansett. And also, it's, it, it doesn't seem to be in compliance with the comprehensive plan, which requires an integration. If you're moving your fee, if you're moving your affordables offsite somewhere and, and stockpiling them somewhere else, then it doesn't, it, it flies in the face of integration.
And the amount of the fee, I mean, it's, you know, not anywhere valuable yet.
Right, it's, you're not, yeah, you're not.
It's no good.
It, and, and that's not to say that, again, somewhere down the pipeline, when things are set up, you guys can, you know, you can look at, you know, kind of wait, and you can either wait and see what other communities do and how it works out, see how the state law changes, see, do, you know, we can set up that subcommittee or a subcommittee to go through that. But again, I, it's that idea of getting something on the books and crawling before you, before you run. Because I just don't want to see, I don't, you know, we could get, we could get stuck in the weeds for a real long time with.
Mr. Chairman, I really like the idea of getting something back on the books. We took a lot of flack for deleting it when the numbers were so untenable.
Well, we prove right, so we'll, we'll, we'll just be very, very classy winners of this one.
Want to say anything?
No, you want to say something? Do you want to say it?
Not yet, not yet.
Okay.
So I just go back to, could you go back to the first slide? I want, I want to be sure.
Sure.
I understand the four points you'd like us to give you guidance on tonight, is that correct? Is that it?
No, these are, these are the four points of changes.
Okay.
So what I had provided to you, so I just wanted to go through and kind of talk about what the changes were. And then I provided you the draft. The draft strikes fee and lieu, it adds, it makes the threshold five or more. And it provides, it gives you a couple of incentives. If there are additional incentives where you want to change that number, the 15% is not negotiable. Some of these things are just not negotiable. The municipal subsidy is not negotiable.
So the only material change then is that, that I can tell right now, if you put it back on, is that it applies to a five lot subdivision where it had to be six before.
So prior to, it dovetailed with major subdivisions.
No, I know.
Right, so it's, it's really, it's what this board would like to do. I, I chose five because, because we're trying to put affordable housing in town. But, but that's up to you. I just picked that as a, as a number that would give me a, you know, it'd give me a partial unit. I was showing you how it would work. If you wanted to go back to, you know, more than five, what it was previous, if you wanted to have it match the new major subdivision regulations, which is 10 or more, it's, it's really, it's, it's up for your discussion.
Did you think about four?
Thank you.
I did not think about four, but we can.
Well, my point exactly, Tom, is like, we're at a point property-wise, how many five, how many five unit, just thinking, single-family homes are we going to have? I mean, you know, is five really where we want it to trigger? Or four more reasonable? And then my question would be, and this is Steve, we'll inflict you with this, is if a builder comes in and says, well, you know, I've got these 10 acres, and I'm going to develop two, and they come in three years later, and I want to add two more, you know, do it incrementally, how do we close that door?
Well, are they, are you, is it a phased development? If it's the same lot, then they would be restricted. Are you asking if they come in?
Well, obviously, if it's a subdivision, it's automatic. But what if somebody comes in and just says, I mean, they're intent, listen, the intent is to put four or five homes there, but they don't want to do the, the affordable units, so it's like, yeah, we're just going to come in for two. And then they, they, they force it as an incremental. Is there anything we can do to close that door, or?
Well, I mean, they would have to subdivide the lot off first and then come in. Because, because if it's a phased development, you.
Right, that's, that's clear, that's clear.
So I think, I mean, it would be, they have to subdivide the lot off to create a new lot that's conforming.
Gotcha.
Can't stop.
Yeah.
All right, I just thought I'd ask, but I like four rather than five.
But if it's one lot or whatever, but not if they subdivide and they have a conforming.
Because I could see people doing it.
Yes.
In a certain period of time.
Sorry, Tom, I high-tapped you.
No, you didn't.
But if he, if he hit six, then things kicked in.
I love when they talk. So much fun to watch adults talking.
Sorry.
No, don't be.
Does the math, I'm just trying to figure out how the math works on four versus five.
Well, it's 15% of four, right? So it's.
Rupert's helping us.
Thank you. Tom doesn't know my, my expert, my experience in math.
27, 26 units.
Right, so then one of them would have to be, right, affordable. So essentially, that would work out to have five market rates and one affordable.
That's fine.
Yeah.
That's what it would work out to be.
I'm sorry, I thought we would, I thought.
Oh, we did four, so it's three and one.
It's four, but it's four, so your baseline is four. You have to do three market rates and one affordable. But then the density bonus in the law says that for your one affordable, you get an additional market rate.
So they end up with four market, one affordable.
They end up with four market and one affordable, thank you.
The other question that's coming up for me is, in your draft, do we need language that they're required to have a monitoring agent? Or is that implied, or should we, should we articulate that?
Let me see. I'm trying to see, we're quickly adding that in, if that was originally.
No, this doesn't tie, this doesn't tie, does this tie to the length of time that the unit can stay affordable?
There's no language in here that states it.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
I'm trying to, but it may tie some other way.
I think it does.
I only threw it quick, I'll be honest, I didn't tell myself anything, I threw it quick.
Because.
Now, it remains affordable for a period of not less than 30 years from initial occupancy, forth through the land lease or deed restriction.
Then it's a 30-year compensation.
So after 30 years, it becomes.
Oh, I know the other thing that came up, I'm sorry. At least 50% under two, A in B, under A, at least 50% of the inclusionary unit should be affordable to low-income households. I think it would be good to have the definition of what low-income households means here. I know it's somewhere, but I, so it.
I'm listening.
So we know, so that people that are reading this, so it's as transparent as possible.
Understood, okay. And did you want me to, I didn't see the, I see the note about term affordability, whether onsite or offsite for 30 years. Do you want me to check with, well, do you want me to add a note about monitoring agent? I, I think that that's all part of the paperwork that's required when it's deemed restricted, affordable, but it, it's up to you if you want a belt and suspenders.
I think proof is good.
All right.
Just again, for clarity.
Sure.
And again, the benchmark for affordability is the 80% AMI?
It is. Yes, that's on, if you go into.
Does it, does 80% mean 80% or less? As opposed to the end?
I mean, I could, well, it doesn't, I don't believe it says that, but it says, so what it says is, well, that's, I'm sorry, so that's for fee and lieu. So for fee and lieu, it requires restricted accounts shall not be allocated and spent for, for development. Hold on, one sec, Tom, let me, let me get there.
Yep, and the term for affordability is under E.
So that's that, in black is our existing language.
Okay.
Our, our previous, our previous existing language, yes, thank you. But I want to see, I just want to just confirm in the state, the state law, so give me one second here. So the state law for, says, and that units will remain affordable for a period of not less than 30 years. From, so that, that sounds like it might be negotiable as well, so it's not less than 30 years. And I think that's the way it is when you do affordable housing and comp permits through land lease or deed restriction.
You know, I, I would prefer it to be.
Right, so specify the threshold in which the inclusion of affordable housing is required, but no event shall the minimum threshold be higher than 10 dwelling units. Okay, so, so you can, you can put the threshold what you want, Tom. So I, I said five, you're suggesting four, so it just can't be more than 10, which again would dovetail with the new major subdivision, right? And then I don't see a note here about the 80% unless it was fee and lieu, just says low income. So you might be able to go higher?
Yeah, it should be some number there, which is what the, what the board.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
Are you, you're suggesting that you'd like a number, a need?
Not, like, for, for example, a number not to exceed or, or not more than.
Not more than 80% or 100%.
Yeah, I like that.
Jill, as a, as a housekeeping thing, where you did the strikeouts, since we don't have anything in the code now, I think.
Oh, it'd all be new.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, 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 it would all be new.
Reduce the.
Yeah, but I wanted to, but I kept what we had, I, I wanted to use it as a.
No, I think it's good.
As a working document, I didn't wanna, you know, I didn't wanna start from scratch. So I, yeah, so I just, and then if you liked some of the language that we had before, I will obviously reinsert it in all this new text. And I'm sorry, are we doing not, not more than eighty percent AMI? Is that what you're suggesting?
That's where I'd like to be, but there's an argument to say not more than a hundred, for example, if you're trying to do.
Oh, AMI and.
Workforce versus something less than.
Well, I mean, AMI and arrogance is about a hundred thirty thousand a year right now, right?
Yeah, I provided that to you.
I'm not sure what it is with the kids, you know, I mean, workforce, it's.
Uh, eighty percent AMI and arrogance is, uh, well, I'm sorry, for how, for house prices or, or cost?
This is the household income of.
Household income is one twelve.
Right. It's one seven, no, it's one s, you're right, it's one twelve.
I'm sorry, eighty, eighty percent is eighty nine nine.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alls I'm saying is, there are some folks, yeah, I think it's good too, but there's some folks that argue workforce is a little higher than that. But I think, I'm, like I said, I'm comfortable with eighty. They have probably will have more than eighty percent.
I mean, we're trying to incentivize this, isn't it?
It's not a lot of senior citizens who qualify for that.
True. I think we're trying to do more than that.
Yep, I agree.
And did, was there any consensus on the number? So where did I have that, it was by my page here. You know, where did, where did I suggest not more than, yeah, so under, uh, if you're under the draft, under B, where it says more than five billion units, I put five dwelling units or more. Is there?
Say that again? I thought we were.
Tom, you had suggested four, I'm, I'm trying to get consensus from the board.
I'm thinking of consensus. We're at four.
Four or more?
Yeah.
Four to nine, right? Four to ten. Ten, ten triggers something.
Oh, yeah, right.
So four to nine, I think that's.
Are we all in agreement of, of striking fee, uh, and lieu for your deal?
Yes.
Right.
We have consensus there?
I, 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 I just like to noodle on that a little bit. I, I, I had no problem with kind of knocking it out for the purposes here, but I just like to noodle on that.
Because the applicant can come in and request it because the statute allows them to bring their own. I just, I, I just don't want us to be saying, yeah, this is, this is what we, I, I, I personally am opposed to it. I'd rather have the units. If they come in and propose something that maybe is like, goes this way, great, we take this, but.
So I'm just curious, is it generally the case that when someone comes in and proposes a fee instead of a unit, that you take it? Or you simply say, I want the unit?
I think, give them the option, I think they have the option.
Steve, um, Jill, if, if, if we have fee and lieu in here, what's a stronger case for, I mean, the applicant come in and say, you know, rather than build the, the unit, we'd rather do a fee and lieu. They can propose that, we can say yes or no. And that's our flexibility in our decision. Does that come out of our hands if we have fee and lieu built into this?
No, uh, fee and lieu is an automatic trip to you.
But.
What could you?
From legal, legal defense, is it more difficult if we have it, is that, yes, this is an option, but we have to decide yes or no, whether or not we want it? Or we don't have it, they propose it, and we say, thank you very much, but no.
I'm sorry, it sounded like the same question. Say it again. I, I, I'm totally, I, I don't, no disrespect, please, again.
No, so an applicant comes in. We, we don't.
Offers a fee and lieu instead of a unit. And we say, we don't want a fee and lieu, we want the unit.
Sure.
And we don't have anything within describing fee and lieu. Is that easier for us to defend than if we have a whole section on, here's the mechanism for fee, fee and lieu? And they come in and say, well, I'm gonna take advantage of this section, and we say, well, yeah, we have it there, but we're not accepting it.
Uh, well, it's drafted right now to read where the fifteen percent calculation is a fraction. That number shall be rounded up to the nearest whole number. You can put language in there that says, you know, you could put a line in that says, uh, fee and lieu is not an option. But, but by the fact that you're not offering it, it's not shown as an option, and you're telling them that they have to do, even for the fractional unit, they have to move up. Now, could they come in for the entirety and offer fee and lieu for the entirety? Uh, I mean, I, I, I don't, you could do that. I mean, you could put it in there and then just deny them every time, but that seems disingenuous.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
I, I, as opposed to just not allowing it? And if someone, if someone wants to come in and try to make the case to you, then, you know, you can.
We're all ears.
Yeah, or, or you can stand on the, the merit of your ordinance that says, we didn't, we didn't want this, and it better be a very compelling case.
Right.
So, just thinking out loud, just thinking out loud for a second. Someone comes in, offers to pay, to pay the equivalent of a fee and lieu, but it's not named a fee and lieu. And it's a contribution to the arrogance, it's affordable housing trust fund. Does that pass straight base testing? Instead of the money then after three years going to the state?
Are you talking about in, in lieu of building a partial unit, Tom?
Yeah. Instead of calling it a fee and lieu, like what the law is saying, you're saying, okay, somebody comes in.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just looking at the definition of.
It's creative accounting.
Of municipal subsidy, uh, such assistance, combination of direct financial support, payment of taxes or fees, approval of density bonuses, uh, so. I mean, I don't, I don't know what they mean, but I mean, I'm reading off the state law, I don't know what they mean by direct financial support. Could that be argued that that's direct financial support maybe? You know, I'm.
But it's going, isn't that going, going the other way?
Yeah, but I don't, yeah, I don't, I mean, I don't know, could they come in and, I mean, I've seen, I'll, I'll build this and I'll build a fourth unit.
Right, exactly.
Yeah.
But that's something they can propose.
But, yeah, they can propose that, so, uh, uh, in Cranston, we, we're not subject to the affordable housing statute or, or we comply. So they come in and they say, look, you know, if, if you, this, it's, it's all voluntary, but it, it, it'll, you know.
Catch you what you want.
It does, and, and it's a negotiation, it's a voluntary negotiation between the planning board and the developer regarding, all right, I'll put in, you know, ten affordable units, et cetera. If you allow me to, you know, to do something else. So it, it becomes a, I mean, it's, it's an allowed negotiation, that's not mandated, uh, but, but where on the, you know, where obviously under different rules.
And it stays in the community, it doesn't after three years go back to the state?
Yeah, but would developer, I mean, developer is gonna take the cheapest way out on this.
Yeah. So again, it goes back to, cause when I look at, you know, how much you're really gonna get out of this? In three years, can you, in three years' time, can you acquire enough to actually do something significant? Because every, every third year falls off. So I, I just, I just find it just, you're gonna be sending checks to the state where I'd rather have the unit and the unit.
And even if we had the money, there's no, there's no infrastructure to build the units here.
Right.
What do you mean?
The town's not in the business of building houses, so we don't have.
But the town isn't, I mean, but, I, I think, I don't wanna, I don't wanna spend a lot of time on this, it's a, um, but the money ends up, the town goes to the affordable housing trust fund. They don't, and they can't use it? Then we just gave them three million bucks?
They'd never build a house.
Huh? No, but they're gonna, they're gonna finance how, they're gonna, they're gonna provide financing for housing as you go forward. They're not gonna be.
But Steve, there's a difference between a bond and, and fee and lieu, correct?
Yeah, there is. But my point is, this is still lined up in the same bucket, still end up there. Your point in terms, it's only gonna end up there for three years, isn't it?
But so, so Tom, this is one of the things I was talking about earlier, about that bond. That bond could be used for a variety of things. It could be used for due diligence, it could be used for a site, where the fee and lieu is unit creation only. It has to be directly attributable, attributable to unit creation. And they lose it. So by the time you accumulate enough money, you might lose it.
Is, is, again, is unit, is unit creation defined?
No, I don't think so.
So in order to create it, you need, there's a whole range of soft costs that go into doing that, everything from engineering to, you kind of go right through the line. So you, you need those kinds of funds for unit creation.
Only for the creation and development of affordable housing within a municipality serving individuals or families at or below eighty percent of AMI.
Right. So that, that's a pretty, that's a pretty broad definition of funds.
Yep.
That said, so if you've got somebody to come in and, and for whatever reason, put the money in the affordable housing, and it wasn't named a fee and lieu? Then you achieve the objective of basically holding on to the money. Having said that.
I just don't know how you take a, you take a fee that doesn't, is not a fee and lieu, and then you, and you don't build the partial unit. Like something happens to that in the case of five units. Something happens to that point two. And if you took money for the point two, but didn't call it fee and lieu, what, where did the point two go?
You call it the contribution, contribution to arrogance, it's affordable housing trust fund. To support the construction of housing in the area, affordable housing in the area, which we just put three million dollars.
It's a fraction, which you need for a unit.
But if.
It's, it's creative accounting.
Exactly.
It's a creative accounting that is called, you're getting, you're getting the same thing, but you're calling it something different.
I know, true.
And, and can you do that legal enough so that you can do it? Which, if you can, I got no problem with that. I'd still rather have the unit, but.
If it walks like a duck and talks like a duck, right? Steve just gave us a definition.
That's what the big guy gets paid for.
Steve just gave us a definition of a duck that was not quite yet a duck. So having said all that, let's put it aside. I, I said I wanted to maul on it, I mauled on it, I'm good.
There's a good mauling, by the way.
Thank you.
All right. What do you need from us?
So what I, I need a couple of things from you, is the direction of this board, so at the moment, probably before we run, we're gonna eliminate fee and lieu. We're going to move the units to, um.
Four.
The four. We're going to put the parameters, no greater than eighty percent AMI.
Yeah.
Um, and I, I think, and are there any other incentives outside of the ones that we already have mentioned? Which is the parking, and I can, I can put in there the, the waivers for, um, planning board costs.
Any other incentives?
Playboard process costs, not costs that.
So did the definition, the existing definition of municipal subsidy get embedded in this already? That the town uses in its stack?
It, it's not embedded in there, I gave it to you, it can go, um, I.
It was, uh.
So I just, I just grabbed it from forty five fifty three three. They referenced it, but I wanted you to know what the definition was. On the right-hand side, where it says additional zoning incentives and government subsidies. So then I referenced that forty five fifty three three, which is the definition on the left. Uh, that they may request additional incentives, subsidies, subsidies as defined there to offset. And I just left it at that, in case that definition changes.
Well, and there may be, there may be things that they request that at this stage, we can't give them, but maybe those can change as things move on.
Right, or there, and there might be things that you want to consider later on, like I said, that, I don't, I think this is a, like the zoning warrants as a whole, it's a living document. And you have the ability to put something on the books now and then work on it. When you discuss in two more agenda items, when your special meeting is, you can send a subcommittee to work on that. So.
That's the state language right there, forty five fifty.
That's the state language on the left side, and it's a, it's a drafted language I did on the right.
There's some language in the exist, in existing ordinance here that refers to municipal subsidies. I want, I want to say it goes in chapter seven someplace, and the only reason I know that is because some of the issues about the extension of utilities to Clark. When they were looking for extension for utilities, because the word utilities is included in that. So you, there may be some value in finding that language and having tried to grab it for you, Jill, if it doesn't come in handy, if you like.
Yeah, if you, if you can put your finger on that, Tom, that would be great.
Yeah, I'll do that.
Okay, that, yeah. Yep.
That'd be super.
That language, by the way, on the right, came from, I think that came directly from the law. I believe that came directly from the law. Or, or it came directly from Rupert in the law. Because Rupert and I.
Rupert is the law.
In full disclosure, Rupert, Rupert and I haven't worked on this, he provided me a draft of which I worked on.
It's a drafty, but it's so long ago, I don't remember where it.
Right. Okay, so you're in municipal subsidy. All right, so I think I have some margin orders. I can get you a, an actual draft ordinance, and I'll, I'll give you at that point, I'll, I'll give you a staff report.
Just, just as a, in the staff report, Jill, just so. Just so people have realistic expectations, including us. Could you give us, over the course of the last five years, how many four lot subdivisions or five lot subdivisions have been actually done? Or five? Zero, right?
Well, this one.
Clark is it.
Clark is it, right. But Clark is, Clark is, Clark is not subject to it because it's five and it was a major subdivision. Also, just in terms of setting, setting expectation.
Yeah.
So you wanna know in the last five years, how many four lot subdivisions we've had?
Four or more, I guess.
Four's, yeah, four or more, that's right, four or more.
And then we can cry.
Don't we know that?
Yeah, here we go back ten years.
Just four. I think it's four, I think it's four.
Four, like Joe Paglia's, what was Joe's, was he?
Joe's, Joe's.
Joe's five.
Five or six.
Five.
Joe's five, no, they always come in at five.
Right.
Five was the magic number. Five was the magic number, yeah. That's why, I mean, that's why I was like, ooh, five is the magic number, let me catch it. But four catches it too.
You may, you're gonna see a lot of threes.
Yeah, so, I mean, you know. What, not that I'm probably the wrong guy to propose this, but what about moving it to three?
Right.
In other words.
I got no problem with that.
Right, no, I agree.
Cause then you get a four. If you move it to three, you get a four.
Correct.
And if we only have lots for four.
Right.
You know, only land, that seems to be what's left.
I have no problem, because I'm looking at five and saying, this will never trigger. Right. And four, I kind of felt the same, but it was sort of like, hey, we got something. I think three is more relevant.
I mean, we had the proposal on one oh eight, they came in with four units, right?
Yeah.
Originally with eight.
Yeah. I thi, I think three is.
Look at me, Tom.
I know. You know what you hang around with as far as? You get, you get infected, Steve.
They're gonna call me to testify up at the state.
They're gonna call you a Democrat, pretty soon. They're gonna call you a socialist Democrat, pretty soon, instead of a free enterprise Republican.
I feel the earth moved. There's a ripple in the force.
All right, so we own a three?
Three.
Three.
Yeah, so.
On the advice of council. Give you the last advice you get.
Don't even say that. All right, so we're, we're gonna move on to the next piece of business? Yep, Jill?
Sure, yes, we can.
All right, so, so we sent our planning, we sent our recommendations on the new legislation to the planning board.
You're on the planning board. You sent it to town council.
I'm sorry, I'm a little, little tired. And we sent it to town council, and it was pulled off their agenda and never put back on. So they, even though we got it, we're done in time, it's never really been approved, correct?
So they, even though we got it, we're done in time, it's never really been approved, correct? It has not been, it has not even been through the process.
It no, it was set, it was put on the agenda for scheduling, and it was removed, and...
Never put back on.
And then never put back on.
All right, so before we begin any conversations with this, Steve, is there anything that is proposed in this that would conflict with any existing ongoing legal, uh, actions within the town? That we need to maybe hold back or look at until those are resolved?
Yeah, so the only one would be... The, is the unrelated in here, who are they?
Yep, it is.
Yeah, the unrelated, so, um, the only one we, at, at, at the time, we had recommended three, four, or five unrelated to match the state law.
Right.
And also three, four, or five college student.
Right.
So at this point, given, um, current litigation, um, the removal of the three, four, or five college student. There's a question whether you can regulate college students. So just the generic matching of the law. Three, four, or five unrelated. That would be, that's the only change to my knowledge, um, in the la, you know, that involves litigation or involves any question of, of, of law. But, you know, ADUs, nothing, nothing has come up on the ADUs, nothing has come up on the basement for the bar.
Right.
Um, you know, matter of fact, we still haven't seen a basement, we, we still don't know who the law is for.
Yeah.
But, I don't, you know, is the seller in the basement? Um, ADUs, nothing on that. Household, my suggestion would be to not include the three, four, or five college student.
Okay.
Um, subdivision regulations, those were all procedural changes, so that's fine. And manufactured homes is fine. So that's the, that's the only change in my opinion.
Chair, Chairman Rupert?
Yep, so, so on the three, four, five unrelated with the court decision on that, is it worth doing?
Well, it, it is worth doing to match state law. Right now, we're not complying with state law.
Okay.
Um, and the judges...
The state law was found...
Well, one judge in a decision found the word unrelated vague. However, that decision is under reconsideration.
Okay.
So I don't know, it may be reconsidered to come out with a different, maybe we improve our case or something like that. You know, I, I'm, rather than the constitution...
It's worth doing, yeah.
Without, without getting into the nitty-grains of exactly that, that's what I asked.
Yeah, yeah, so, but, so it, it could mean that we make these changes for state law, the, the judge makes his final decision, and then the legislature changes it again.
Yeah.
Um, that wouldn't surprise me, but I, you know, again, um, that, that would be for next year.
I guess I'm confused on the three, four, five, six student piece. It's where it, where it sits with respect to litigation, and let me just, and how it relates to what we're being, what, what's, what's in here right now?
See, I think, where it's...
How it relates to what we're being asked to, which was, which was about...
Oh, the, the law should be changed, the litigation would only, is right now, it, it's only going to the fines if the people were, because once the state law changed, each city and town were obligated to change their ordinance. So the current litigation is really only, if, if we're found successful, we would go to the fines of the, and again, not to get into specific cases, the fines of any violation in the past. It wouldn't affect this law going forward.
So it doesn't affect the threshold?
No, it's three, you know, one per bed, you know, whatever it says, up to five, and then if you had a six-bedroom, now, I mean, you could be a pre-existing non-conforming. The battle will continue with this definition, because you could have a six, a legitimate six-bedroom house, which now could be a pre-existing non-conforming use, which you'd have to go to Superior Court, you gotta declaratory judgment. So, um, it's really, it kind of takes up most of the houses out of the litigation. But it's still, if you had a seven-bedroom house, it would still, right now, under the state law, you can only put five people.
It's the same for students and, and unrelated?
Well, the student, the student, I'm suggesting we, we do not, we take that out.
Okay. All right.
Steve, so can we have two separate paragraphs here, one, college students, and the other, unrelated?
Well, we do in our current law, but we, we, as far as the current ordinance, but that ordinance is going to be repealed, so no use sending it. The college student.
So the terminology is college students.
College, correct.
The term, terminology, unrelated?
The unrelated, that, that's the one that's, there, there's a chance that the state of Rhode Island has nothing anywhere to stop it, to...
So...
Uh, and, and the entire, because if, if the unrelated, if the unrelated word is struck out, that's in the new law. So the new law would be void, which means that no municipality could regulate how many people are in a home. But that's why I'm assuming they'll change it. Or define it.
Jill, you, you, you and Steve can work that out?
Well, there's only, that would be the only change, so, right, Jill, would we be just sending this?
Well, so the question is, what is the change? Is the change not making the, is, is the change from what you originally recommended to now taking section seven point two-three, which is student-occupied dwellings in R-ten, R-ten A, and R-twenty zones, and not making the suggested changes that you did before, essentially leaving the original definition? Is that the change that, that's being, that you're suggesting?
I think it's in Steve's court. I mean, I think that's, the question is in Steve's court, as to what he thinks we should start doing.
Well, so there, there's that, which is undoing the change that you made, so you go back to the original definition.
Or striking it, so the, the, yeah, so the question is, is do you make the change, three, four, or five college students, or just strike the student-occupied dwelling? I mean, that mu, that's probably a town council decision.
So then this board, what you had originally, what you had originally recommended was to make the student-occupied dwelling change to, to mimic the household definition, but advice on, based on legal, um...
Advice of council?
Yeah, well, uh, yeah, but...
Yeah, so again, the, the, the legal law, the, the legal issue is, does a municipality have the right to regulate a college student if it's not in the enabling statute?
The state's enabling statute.
State's enabling statute.
State's enabling.
So that's the vagueness. Now, there is a Supreme Court case that says, you, there is a Supreme Court case, but not on, that's on the constitutionality of it, not on the ability. So you can, you can, right now, it's still valid, and you could keep it in, and if the town council wanted to strike it out, they can. It's, it, it would be valid as originally proposed right now. There's just a question of, of the ability to do it. And I don't have the answer to that, because it's, it's, it hasn't been litigated yet.
So then, then let me, let me ask a question in a different way. Since the, since the definition of household has changed to three, four, or five, one per bedroom, right? And if the suggestion is to not, to remove your change to have student-occupied dwellings, then it would double back to the original definition. And since the original definition, it, it, it's not part of the twenty-twenty-four mandated changes, then that would happen at a separate time. Do you know what I mean? You wouldn't, you wouldn't take up that, that mantle at this moment, because these changes were geared toward the, the state law changes in June of twenty-twenty-four. That change of striking student-occupied dwellings is a different animal.
So you're suggesting you left, left it?
I'm suggesting to you that it's not part of the twenty-twenty-four mandated changes, of which you had originally taken up. If you wanted to take up striking that, that definition altogether, well, that's a, that's probably a more in-depth conversation that we would need to look at, because then I gotta update the report again based on that, because that's not just going back to what you had, that's removing something that was there, and you're, we're gonna need to make some, you know, some findings on that.
I just wanted to make sure that whatever we, whatever we recommend, we're not shooting ourselves in the foot because of an ongoing case.
No, these are man, the, the, the law has already changed. It's, it's, you know, if, if an applicant comes in and wants an accessory dwelling unit and complies with the state law, just because our ordinance doesn't say it...
Right.
They still get it, so we should change...
So on advice of council, do we just leave things as is and, and set it forward as, with the changes we had made based on the twenty-twenty-four? So, I mean, I'm, I'm looking for an answer here.
Well, okay, so I'm, I'm...
Having heard council's opinion, let's just do that. Right?
Yeah, there's, uh, there's two thoughts, is you, the, the section seven point two-three was an optional change, because there's a legal theory that college students are separate classes, legal issue. And therefore, it's not under the auspices of a mandatory change to, and it, it was, it's in the town's best interest to get the mandatory change done, and let the, the legislature and the litigation, which is still ongoing, work itself out, and the town is not going to be enforcing the three college students while this is all going on. So maybe it's better to strike the change to seven point two-three. So leave it as is, to not give an opinion at this point.
Right.
To allow the town council to look at the mandatory changes, yes.
And that, Jill, that's what you're saying?
Yes, that's what I'm saying, but I'm also saying that on your behalf, because this board recommended making that change a couple of years ago. So if you're going to make that substantive change outside of the twenty-twenty-four legislation, you're going to want to vet that, and that's going to want to be in your recommendation at town council.
Yeah.
Which is not part of this task.
Yeah, I wasn't just changing it to change it, I was changing it because I had concerns as to where legals, legalians were at this point in time, and I did not want to shoot ourselves in the court of the community, so...
Understood.
All right, so, so...
So that we are striking the change and going back to the original. I'll have it removed.
And it will be removed from your...
It will be removed.
It's going to be removed.
It will be removed from your recommendations to town council, so it will revert back to its original, it will stay in the ordinance as is, and be removed from your recommendation to council.
Okay.
Yeah.
Chairman? Um, so I have one typo.
Of course you do.
On page three, the last paragraph, it reads, in addition to, in addition, H-seven-nine-four-nine also made changes. It's missing the word two before the, the, yeah. This means the word two.
Wait a minute, there, uh, there is a few typos in here. Rupert, I'll pick up most of them.
And then, uh, on the table in six, six point one, I think it would be good if we add headings just for...
For me.
For clarity when it goes to council, so they know what these columns are.
Wait a minute, that, that...
The, the table in six point one, let's add the column headings in there, so you know what we'll, what the and the X's and...
Section two.
It's just a, it's just a formatting thing.
Uh, no, no, understood. So I, I thought we were, I thought you were in the recommendations, so column headings, yeah, I can add that in. And then, uh, can you go back to your other edit for a minute?
Yeah, it's on, um, page two.
Yeah, are we in the drafted ordinance or are we in the report?
Uh, the report.
The report, okay, thank you.
Uh, the very bottom block of text, the first line, in addition, H-seven-nine-four-nine also made changes. It's missing the word two after changes.
Ah, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, and I will edit, I'll edit all that to be in the affirmative. I realized that there were some typos, which just gives me the opportunity to fix. So, okay, I can do that. And both of those, so what I'm hearing then, um, is I'm gonna add the column headings in under section six point one. I'm going to strike the, the recommended revisions that you had in section seven point two-three, so that means that section will be removed from this draft and revert back to its original definition. Okay? Is there anything else?
I didn't, I mean, I'm sure there's stuff coming.
So I need a recommendation.
So, um, do I have a motion to forward this to the town council?
So move.
As amended.
As amended.
As amended.
Thank you.
As amended, yeah. Second.
Seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And then let's just...
Who seconded, please?
Heidi.
Thank you, Tom.
Yeah. Thank you, guys. All right, last piece of business is special meetings.
Just chairman, we've been in it for the minutes, eh?
What's that?
The minutes.
Oh, true. From October. So I need a motion, I need a motion on November's, uh, minutes to continue that to the next meeting.
So move.
Do I have seconded?
Not seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So now I have, uh, we have the special, uh, we have the October...
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, uh, minutes. Anybody have comments on those, Doc?
No, I, I, just the idea of sitting down and reading them while we're doing. Was this, uh, given to us before, on the computer?
No, they, um...
No. So maybe, you know, that's the only, and you might say, well, why don't you just come here early, and then you can read the...
You wanna table, you wanna table these till the next meeting?
No, 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 I...
I have somebody who does, so...
You have somebody who wants to table?
Yeah.
Sure.
All right. Do I have a seconded?
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Take care of that.
All right.
Who's seconded, I'm sorry?
Doc seconded. Tom was the initial.
Yep.
Yep.
So now the last piece of business is, um, so availability of, uh, special planning board meeting, and, uh... Jill, you wanna go through this?
Yeah, so you guys had, so this board had come up with a list of special projects they wanted to work on. You wanted to talk about them at the last special meeting in October. You talked about the comprehensive plan, action plan, but you didn't get to your, uh, three-page list of things you wanted to work on. So we're trying to set up a special meeting to do that, where you can discuss that and possibly set up any subcommittees that you'd like to set up at that point in time.
Um, so on the table are Wednesday, January fifteenth, Thursday, January sixteenth, Tuesday, January twenty-eighth, Wednesday, January twenty-ninth, and Thursday, January thirtieth. And, uh, Heidi, did people tell you?
Uh, no, I did, you are not available the fifteenth and the twenty...
Fifteenth and the twenty-ninth.
Fifteenth and the twenty-ninth.
Fifteenth and the twenty-ninth are no-gos, really?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah?
The sixteenth, um, there is a, uh, Affordable Housing Meeting at the community center.
All right. And also I have a land trust meeting that's in the evening. Okay. So we're down to the twenty-eighth or the thirtieth? Anybody have a preference? Doc?
May I make a comment here?
You may.
We're meeting with the new town council somewhere here.
On the twenty-seventh, that's the next item.
Yeah, it's the next, I mean...
Yeah, well, yeah, but it relates to this item. Don't we want, we're all new, the new bunch.
Right.
Don't we want to sit and talk with them, and they may to direct or have some thoughts that, before we sit down and say, oh, that's a good idea? I just, I, I think...
Put the car before the horse?
Well, it's, it's a new bunch, and I'm sure they're enthusiastic, and, uh, I would think that we would, whatever we do here, I guess, we could have a meeting, I guess, the next night? No, not quite, I guess, the thirteen to twenty-seventh, you said they already decided on twenty-seventh?
Yes, I believe the town council work session is for the, I believe it was the mixed-use ordinance, correct?
Yeah, that's what I thought it was, so it's...
Yes, so you have a work session scheduled with town council on, on January twenty-seventh to discuss the mixed-use ordinance.
All right, oh, okay.
The other me, the other dates are for this board to, like, you work off the list of projects and form subcommittees.
Yeah, yeah, so there'll be nothing... So there'll be nothing else discussed except that one item on the 27th, the town council?
At least that's what we understand.
Yes, that's what it's scheduled for, Dr. O'Neill. If there was, if there was to be another formal discussion with the town council, it needs to, it needs to go to them for scheduling.
Can I ask a question, but just on that, on that meeting? Is that a, that's a work session and not a public hearing, correct?
Correct.
And is the work session a session for, is the work session scheduled in a way that there's an opportunity for public comment?
I don't know if they allow public comment at work sessions, that's a good question. I don't, I don't, I wanna say no, but I'm not 100% sure on that.
At times they have, but usually.
Yeah, I, I feel like it's, sometimes they do, sometimes they don't. It's a, I, I think it's council-dependent. I, I've felt like that, like sometimes previous councils have not allowed it, sometimes they do.
It doesn't mean that we can't have an open meeting, have a public meeting on it when we go through it.
Yeah, oh, yeah, you'll, you'll have free rein to talk with the council. Yeah, you will, and I imagine that the Affordable House and Trust Collaborative folks would, they're gonna be in the audience as well. At least some of them, they're, they're gonna wanna, and they would likely wanna speak if, if given the opportunity. And it's a public meeting, so people will be there and people will be watching.
What time is the order?
6:00 PM.
So, Doc, is Wednesday better for you?
It always is, yeah.
So Wednesday, the 29th?
Doesn't work for me.
Doesn't, oh, that one doesn't work for you? 30th? Uh, we got Thursday, the 30th? Doc, does that work for you?
I'm good.
Everybody else, Tom?
Yep.
Rupert?
Yep.
So let's go with the 30th.
Again, it says it's after our meeting with the town council because we're talking about working projects and directions and whatever, I, you know. Again, I, I doubt the town council people, they'd be reluctant to say, hey, you know, you guys want to work out.
So, Dr. O'Neill, your meeting is also a public meeting, and any council member can come to your meeting as well.
We should be, right.
But to set up a workshop with them, and we could do that, it's, it's a more formal process.
But if they're, if they're all there and we're all there, and yes, there's an agenda, but in any case, my thinking is, and we've just done it, is to have our meeting after that meeting, just because or maybe something comes out of there that we realize.
That works.
As a planning board.
Yep.
And in our meeting with them, I will mention our, our work probably.
Yep.
Yep.
Right. Steph, anything else you need us to address, look at, think about?
For that?
For anything?
No, I have on your agenda a full zoning district update, but I, I, I think that, I think that just sort of was born from this special project thing where there are two things I mentioned that we wanted to work on. One of them was inclusionary zoning, the other one was the, the district map, and a full update. Ryan has been working diligently over the last couple of months. Our zoning district map is almost ready to be in House Group Red, and we found a few discrepancies between our current zoning and our future land use, but nothing, I mean, I don't wanna say nothing you don't, we shouldn't worry about, but one of them we saw recently, which was the Sweeney Meadows, and then a couple of others which don't have applications before you at the moment. All of this could be addressed as we move forward with the comprehensive plan update. Unless, of course, at that special meeting, you know, we talk about it and you wanna move forward with making changes ahead of time, but otherwise, the comp, pardon me, the comp plan update is a good, a good time to do that. And Ryan, Ryan went through, he went, what, back to 2012, I think?
Oh, for?
For, to see all the zoning ordinance changes or future land use changes. To make sure that both maps, the future land use map is, is correct, but I think it's the zoning map. We either have to edit because we're, we're behind it, or because previous town councils denied the changes, or whether we just found the errors.
Okay. All right, Community Development Planning Board 2024 Annual Report?
Just letting you know that's coming up next month.
Okay, great, that's on the next agenda. Board members? Thank you very much. Right of a motion to close our meeting and adjourn?
So move.
Seconded?
I don't have a second.
They're all sleeping.
Do I have a second or don't I?
Jerry's second.
Jerry's second, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Do you have a?
Very.
Steve's.